That's the only time I remember it was bad or submission.
She's on right now. Yeah, she has another one. So, yeah, it's earlier for better than since we don't like to comment. I need to tell them something really quick, a live chat on YouTube.
Call to order that came into our three board of education regular session here in the administration office boardroom today, Monday, November 8, 2021. And we will do the pledge of allegiance.
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for the agenda today, we thought about moving up the district audit report. We have a presenter on Zoom unless somebody wants to have a little comment. We didn't have anyone sign up for it. So I'm sorry, for the audit, for the financial audit, Mrs. Graves is on Zoom. So we're going to move it up just to go ahead and get through that portion.
Okay.
And just so you know, she has a second school board presentation later this evening. So she needs to get this one done so she can get to that second school board meeting in a different district.
Oh, okay. So we need to just make an amendment then to the agenda. How everyone to say that, just to move, do you have a recommendation?
You know, I would just make a motion to approve the agenda and modify the placement of the district audit report.
Remember that, Eric?
So move.
So, okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Great. So we'll go ahead and get started with new business 2021 district audit report. And we have Ms. Lindsay Graves, Partner Graves and Associate on Zoom.
Lindsay, the floor is yours. And it looks like you might be muted here. Who's got control of that?
She does.
Lindsay, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Lindsay?
Are we muted? The virtue.
Oh, we can't hear us. Okay.
I'm calling her right now.
Go to full screen on it.
Hi, Lindsay, we've got you muted.
Do we have to go to the full screen?
I'm trying to.
No, we can't hear you.
Click the join audio button at the bottom left.
Here we go. We got you now. We're good.
All right, perfect. All right. Thank you.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can now.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Uh huh. Thank you.
And we.
Are you all ready for me now that I can hear you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. And can I hear my screen of the audit report?
Yeah, definitely.
Yes, I'd be fine, Lindsay.
Stable participants.
You have to enable it to let her share.
I Zoom like five times a day, so.
We'll get you set up to share.
Just to everyone else, Graves and Associates does our annual audit reports on our financials and our processes. And so Lindsay is going to be presenting on that just in case Flot Home did not know that. Can we turn her up at all? Or put the microphone closer to your. Can we turn her up?
Is it a speaker?
All right. Can you guys see that there?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, yes. So Lindsay Graves, Graves and Associates, DPA is here to present your 2021 audit report. The first few pages of the report are what you retain us to do, and that's to perform an audit in accordance with professional standards to render an opinion on your financial statements. We're coming back to you again this year with what we call an unqualified opinion. And basically, that's what you want to hear us say is nothing came to our attention during the course of the audit that would have rendered any modifications. The next section of your audit report are the financial statements. And I'm just going to hit on a few highlights here. We're required to present essentially your balance, balance sheet and your income statement in two different formats. I'm going to jump ahead to page six here, or seven. And this is your income statement by the four funds, which you're more, how you're more accustomed to seeing your financial statements. Again, just a few highlights here. Overall revenues compared to June 30th, 2020 are up about 3%. Spending's down about 1%. And one of the things that we look at to determine the financial health of the district is how many months of operating reserves you have built up. And focusing on funds, funds one and fund two, since those are your operating funds. And as of June 30th this year, you had just under five months of operating reserves built up. And what we're looking for here is that in a worst case scenario, if the district got into some funding issues, that you would have those reserves built up to meet your operating obligations. And as I've talked to you all in the past, typically you sort of refer to this as a four to six month rule of thumb. And you guys being right there in just under five months are right within that. Rule, right within that benchmark. The next section of your audit report on the notes have the financial statements. I'm just going to hit on a few highlights on these as well. It goes on for quite a few pages and gives narrative to what's going on in the financial statements. The first one that I'm going to go over is all the way down here, page 16, I believe this is. Note two, cash and investment. Being a political subdivision in the state of Missouri, state statutes require all of your deposits to be collateralized or covered by FDIC insurance. And that's what this note is disclosing to you that as of June 30th, all of your deposits were fully covered. And what this did is that if the financial institutions themselves would default, would get into trouble, that all of your deposits would be covered and you could essentially get those money back. That's why that's written into the state statutes. The next note that I'm going to, oops, the wrong button there. Oh, oh, sorry. There we go. Um, the next note that I'm going to go over is the debt. And we just continue to pay down 5.1 million further on our bonds during the year. And then provide the repayment schedule through 2035 of just over 80 million of bonds as of June 30th, 2020. Uh, the next note here, note five, retirement plan. This is basically stating that you measure four and a half, 14 and a half percent contribution requirement to PSR as the year ended. And then the 6.86% to peers. And then the next note I'm going to touch on here, taxes. So operating in the three counties, we're looking at what your current and delinquent collections are. And so as of June 30th, we had 101% for Camden County, 112% for Lutley, and 101% for Morgan. We typically see those rates between the 96 and 99%. So they're a little high right now. But what it is, is it's an ebb and flow is you'll see years, um, the delinquencies are up. I like to use the 2008 recession as an example of that. We saw in the Big Bird area, delinquencies increased as people were faced with hard financial times. And so again, we're just looking to make sure that you're, the district's receiving all of the funds from the counties that are owed to them. And so again, you'll see that percentage go up in some years and go back down just depending on what's going on economically. A year ago, when I was presenting, I was getting the question a lot of what I think is going to happen with collections with COVID going on, et cetera. And of course, didn't have my crystal ball, but so far we've seen those hold pretty steady. And of course, down there in the Lake area, it's been booming for the last year and a half. And so those, those rates have stayed, stayed pretty good. As of June 30th, you did have some commitments to some construction projects, about 330,000. And then in the next note, this closes that subsequent to your year end, you had already paid 254 on that project. And so on subsequent events, we do have your audit each year as of June 30th, but we're required to review any significant events that occur through the date of our audit report, which is November 8th, today's date. Uh, we have canned disclosure. Again, there's a row that as of the date of our audit report here in November, that COVID is still going on. And we still don't know economically or operationally and financially, uh, what the effects may or may not be. I was hoping back when I was presenting audits in May or so that we would be able to get rid of that note sometimes. But so far, professional standards are requiring us to keep that in there with, if this thing pops up and pops down, I guess we could call it does and blows itself. The next section are your budgets, a shared comparison schedule for the funds one and fund two, general special revenue fund. State statute requires you all to go through the budgeting process. And so this is disclosing that you all met that requirement this year. Next section of your audit report is the federal compliance. Being a non-federal entity, spending more than $750,000 again this year, you're required to what we call a single audit. And that's where we come in and audit your federal programs on a rotational basis. And we're required to hit certain percentages for you all, and it's 40% of federal dollars, total federal dollars spent that we had to hit this year. So we tested Fed Title I and then the education stabilization funds this year. So we had to take the programs that we audited. And as the, this schedule shows, you spent just over 7.1 million in federal monies as of June 30th. And the next section here, the letter on government auditing standard, this is required to be done as part of the single audit. It basically has to do with, it's commonly called the yellow book, that I have to have, um, and our firm has to have certain continuing education each year, namely 40 hours of education in these areas having to do with the single audit, et cetera. And then here at this letter, this is where we're providing another unmodified opinion on the federal compliance section itself, which again is what you want to hear us say. And then the next section here, scheduled findings and responses. This is where finally I feel like in this report, it's clear of here's your financial statement opinion, here's our compliance opinions. We've audited and modified. And then it lists out which of those federal programs we audited this year. Coming back to you, here's with the, what we call a finding. Again, I wish the, the profession would come up with a different term for this because I think of a finding as being something was being done incorrectly. You detected it during the audit, you know, you write a response, you know, fix it, et cetera. And so we're coming back to you again this year with segregation of duties. And just that given the size of the district that we might not, we can't fully segregate duties. And when I say that, keeping the assets separate from the accounting system, bank accounts separate from the accounting system, et cetera. As I've talked to you guys in the past, some textbook cases that you have to have as many as 14 people involved in a transaction in order to fully segregate duties, and of course, it's not reasonable to hire extra people just to segregate duties. So nothing came to our attention during the course of the audit, but it is just a risk that errors or omissions could happen just given the size of the district and the number of people involved in those transactions. And the next section, this has been around now for a few years, the corrective action plan. Not doing very good with my mouse. And yeah, this has been around now for a few years. And that's where with that finding, you put it on your letterhead, Dr. Hadfield has signed it. And as here on completion date, we say not applicable because we do expect it to be an ongoing thing. Um, because historically been there, that's what we're required to do is the, you know, again, if it was, you know, something that was being done incorrectly, you're written up on it, then this is where you would say, you know, we got it corrected by this date. And then Dr. Hadfield signature there. Last section of your audit report is the state compliance section. Desi requires us to perform an examination versus an audit on the certain statistics, namely transportation and attendance, and then they pick some other ones. And so we don't have any findings related to that, but that goes on for about four pages, all those statistics that they require us to look at, et cetera. There are two letters that accompany your audit report. The first one I'm going to go over is the communication of audit results. And I don't have anything new here, different this year from last year or any other recent years probably. What this letter is, is that during the course of the audit, we're working with management and we're working with employees. But ultimately, as independent auditors, we report back to you all as the governing body. And so this is putting narrative to things that did or didn't happen during the course of the audit. And I'm just going to hit on a couple of highlights here as well. First one being that we're reviewing management's estimate of budgeting revenue in that process. And of course, you all are involved in that also, but we're required to look at that and determine that we believe that it's reasonable. And we're not saying it's going to be, you know, something that we know it's not going to be, et cetera. And then further brings to your attention the sensitivity of that FDIC and pledge collateral note, where you have all of your deposits are required to be covered. Just further brings to your attention the sensitivity and the importance of ensuring and ensuring compliance of state statute and your deposits are covered. Last two items on this letter, difficulties encountered in performing the audit and disagreements with management. I don't have anything here, but I do, just by the nature of the course of the audit process, we're typically only in front of you all as the governing body once a year. And so I just like to talk to my boards and let them hear from me directly or whatever, um, of any difficulties we had or any disagreements with management. I often get the question, what's my most common difficulty in performing the audit? And in recent years, and it's kind of gotten worse unfortunately in the last year and a half or so than it has gotten better, is turnover at audittees. And it's fair to say we've all experienced way over shortage and turnover in one way or another. And so that's what's usually happened. And the oddity just struggles to get back with us, to get us information, et cetera. Of course, that's not the case with you, but that is one. And then disagreements with management, I thankfully only ever had a couple of these in my career. They're not a good situation. They typically result in us reviving from the engagement. If management's having significant disagreements with the independent auditors or vice versa, again, it's just, it's not a good situation. On both of these, and especially disagreements with management, if something would happen that's significant enough that it gets warranted into this letter or results in the resignation on the engagement, we're required under professional standards to reach out to you all as the governing body ahead of time and say, hey, this is what we're, what we're, the issues that we're having. And that's typically been the board president or the board treasurer in the past when it happened to situations. And then the second letter that accompanies the audit report is the management letter. And they don't have anything new or different here other, we just have to repeat that one finding. It used to be we only had to repeat it, or only had to put it in the letter, or excuse me, in the audit report once and in the letter once. And then they added that corrective action plan, so now it's in here for a total of three times. That is the conclusion of the 2021 audit report. Can I answer any questions?
So I have a couple. Where, what is the total amount that you have for our fund, for our reserve, for our five month reserve?
So that's just using what remains in fund one because fund two's been zeroed out. Let me get back down here. So that 18, 104, 294.
Okay.
So we're taking total expenditures for the two funds, which is about 48,000, dividing it by 12, and then dividing it into that 18 million 104.
It's on here somewhere. Or did you just do it yourself?
It's not in the audit report itself. That's just part of my presentation note.
Oh, okay.
Does that help? Yeah.
Right. I do see a number. It says total assets 18. Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. And then when you, when you say that we have a deficiency, yes, that goes back to the same one you kept mentioning? So on one of these pages, it just says yes, no, yes, no, one of them, yes for deficiency. Is that the same separation?
Yes, that's the segregation of duties.
Segregation.
Yes, back there in the federal compliance section, that question there, materially misses, no, significant deficiency, yes, that has to deal with that. That's what that is.
And then what, do you know what our current number of segregation is? Your recommendation was 14. Do you know how many we have?
Um, I don't know that offhand, and it's going to depend on what process, you know, it's receiving monies or, you know, payables, et cetera. It's going to depend on the process, the payroll processing, it just depends. So it's not like one step number from across the board.
Do you have a reasonable amount for our staff size?
What we do is we look at the mitigating controls that you have in place. So basically, working to the best of what the number of people that you have. And we did not have this year any further recommendations on that during the audit process. We're required to, we're not, we're not testing internal controls. We're not required to do that. But we do do walkthroughs and inquiry and observation of what those processes are. So we sit in the office with those employees, walk me through, you know, this transaction, paying this bill, and walk me through your, you know, payroll processing, et cetera.
How common is it for a district of our size to have that deficiency?
So our firm performs a little over 100 audits in the course of the year on smaller to medium sized entities such as yourself. I haven't put pencil to paper, but if I had to guess, I would say probably 95, 96% of our entities receive this. So rather common.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Did I read on the last report, a recommendation of possibly a CFO for our district size? Uh, it was recommended with point, but I didn't see it at this point.
Do you recall last year, there was a recommendation of a CFO on the audit?
No, I don't think there made any sort of recommendations like that.
I will. But this is making sure we heard everybody, okay? Everybody's getting red faced. I thought maybe you were mad at me, but I thought the audit was pretty good, actually.
It's getting really warm in here. I'm sorry. Not because of your report.
I did too. Um, I told Dr. Hadfield that there where you guys received drafts ahead of time. And then we issued a final today, other than putting today's date on the audit report and throughout the letters. We had one little change. Dr. Hadfield, I want to make sure I hear you out my promises that I was going to, went out with changed. And all it was, was right here, we had, shoot, I can't even remember now. It was a different, um, bank name, and we started updating it and changed it to UMB. We did have that one changed from the draft. I meant to highlight that in my presentation.
And when you say that, can you explain the November language in there again? Just that you couldn't go much further than that or?
Okay, so we're, so we're auditing your books as of June 30th each year. And then once we're finished and we're ready to put the opinion on our financial statements, we gathered all of our evidence. We've done everything we're required to do under professional standards, then we date the audit report. And so that's typically for you all here at the beginning of November, just before your board meeting. And so for those subsequent events, we're required through the date of that audit, but the audit report to review any significant subsequent events. You know, if you issue, you know, bonds or, you know, anything like that that might be going on.
So this is the 2020 though, that a typo, this is 2021?
No, you all, you all have a copy of the draft and then this is the final.
Oh, okay.
And that, would that, would that one change and then those dates?
So this will be updated to 2021?
Yep.
Got it. That was the anti-straits. Any other discussion or questions?
Move to approve the final 2020, 2021 district audit report is presented.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Guys, thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Lindsay.
You guys have a good rest of your evening.
Now we can move to student and staff recognition.
Okay, I will get done with this and then hit the air for you. Congratulations to Daniel Mulder and Randy Schubert, who won the Laker Wave Maker Award for the first quarter. The Laker Wave Maker Award is a new recognition the district awards to one certified staff member and one classified staff member. Community partners help to select and support the process and the award. Congratulations to Ashley Vest and Sidney Ryder, who qualified for and competed in the Misha's State Golf Championships. Congratulations. Congratulations to Ellie Webb, who qualified for state cross-country. The Camden Town Middle School seventh-grade football team went undefeated this season. Congratulations to students and staff members on their successful opening of Time to Grow on Boardwalk on Fifty-Four. Camden Town Classified Employees of the Week were Stephanie Schragger, Secretary at Oak Ridge, Michelle Baruska, Secretary at the Middle School, Megan Hussey, Secretary at Dogwood, and Jamie Fisher, Kitchen Manager at the High School. Thank you to the Belcantos, who performed at the MSBA Annual Conference in Kansas City on Friday. Got standing ovation, by the way, when they wrapped up with Proud to be an American. And it was, they did a wonderful job, I was proud of them. Thank you to the CHS JROTC Laker Battalion Cadets for being part of the student showcase at the MSBA Annual Conference on Saturday. Congratulations to your, one of your student advisors, Miley. Miley was, Miley placed first in varsity dramatic interpretation at the Willard Invitational Speech and Debate Tournament, and the varsity team placed fourth overall. And then, Miley, at the Republic Tournament, was the first-place champion Lincoln Douglas Debate, first-place varsity program of overall interpretation. And Brooke Ecternock received second-place champion Lincoln Douglas Debate. So, there you go, lots going on.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations. All right, next we go to public comments. And just remind that you have five minutes, and I think you already have the timer, so we don't hear it, so. All right, out of the first will be Ms. Atkinson.
Well, public speaking is not my thing, but because I live in this district, this is where I get to voice my opinion. This picture, it's not show and tell, but this picture is my extended family. The little guy in the middle, his name is Gilane Lane David Atkinson. He was adopted from Haiti, and he does look different than me. But what's not different about Lane is he's still sad, he's still happy, he gets hungry, he gets tired, just like the rest of us do. But to tell him that he's different because of CRT as part of our curriculum makes me sad. He knows he's different, but it doesn't mean that he's not special. So it's really difficult to explain to a ten-year-old why at school, in the Springfield Public School Systems, he's told that he's oppressed because he's darker-skinned than we are, that his little blond-headed, blue-eyed sisters are his oppressors. Let me tell you, they're not. They're his cheerleaders, and he loves them, and we love Lane. And so I want to ask the school board for us to remove ourselves from any entity that's trying to teach division between classes, races, because we're all humans. We all love, we all hurt, but I think we should be each other's cheerleaders instead of devisers. So please, please, think about withdrawing from MSBA with the curriculum that they push and the agenda that's pushed. Thank you.
Next is Daniel Ausley.
First and foremost, I want to thank you, the board. I watched over the last several months as this board has led the way for other districts in Missouri. You've led the way by taking the masks off our kids. You've led the way by turning down the last round of Esther funds, which we all know these federal funds always have strings attached, especially when it comes time for reimbursement. I know this was not an easy decision, but it was the right decision. The money was part of the American Rescue Plan, and we all know we don't need the federal government to rescue us. I can't put into words how proud I am of this board, and I thank you. I hope that you will continue to lead the way in Missouri by cutting ties with MSBA. As I wrote to you in my emails, and as you all know, MSBA staff spends a great deal of time at the Capitol lobbying for their agenda and against the entrance, interest of our students and our families. They lobby on behalf of government. MSBA claims to be for local control, but that could not be further from the truth. Most legislation to empower parents and protect children has not been passed. There has been no other time in history that our children have been under such assault, and we must do everything to protect them from things such as mask mandates, vaccine mandates, critical race theory, transgender indoctrination, pornographic sex education, socialism, and anti-American ideologies that are threatening our public systems, school systems. MSBA is a left-wing organization who is also joined with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in hiding academic achievement measures from parents and, and the public in excusing the lack of mastery of needed skills. Many of our students are not proficient in vital subjects such as math. The Camden Town School District spends ninety-seven hundred dollars from local tax dollars each year to help MSBA sabotage our schools. Why would we continue down this dangerous path of destruction? It's time to part ways with MSBA and get back to local control. And again, I thank you for all you do to protect our kids, and I thank you for leading the way for our schools. I thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jane Cunningham, MSBA.
Let me ask the audience first, how many of you were here at the last board meeting and heard Melissa Randall, who is the executive, chief executive of MSBA, speak? How many of you heard that? Okay, pretty good number. You'll remember that she looked at the audience after a number of people came and spoke to the board and said, please get out of MSBA, and I'll have to say she did a great job. And she said, I'm just like you. I think you should be doing this, I praise you, I'm in solidarity with you. I mean, she really reached out to the audience and praised you for what you were doing. Now, that's scene one. Remember that scene, I'm going to go back to it, but we're going to another scene. This that I'm reading from is a civility policy that I got hold of, and it says, uncivil behavior shall be prohibited. That's in a school district. And examples of uncivil behavior written in here are use of profanity, personally insulting remarks, attacks on a person's gender, identity, expression, sexual orientation. These interactions can be by telephone or text message, voicemail message, personal conversations, written emails, social media. And then this policy that was proposed says, any uncivil behavior, like I described, should be reported immediately to the appropriate district personnel. A record will be made of any alleged incident. Then it goes on to say that patrons and members of the general public may be subject to district action, including being banned from district property. And then it goes on to say retaliation against a person who reports a claim of uncivil behavior is prohibited. In other words, you can't even confront the person who said, hey, this person did an uncivil behavior, and we're going to make a record on that in the school district. Sounds like something we've all been hearing all over the country, isn't it? But you know what? This policy was proposed in a district in St. Louis County five years ago. I got a call from the president of the board. A lot of parents I'd already been working with, and they were very concerned about the transgender indoctrination, socialism, and other things coming into their school. They passionately gone to the school board. But this was the president of the school board that called me and said, would you look at this policy and what do you advise, Jane? Well, what I did is I took that policy, I emailed it to Melissa Randall. She was at that time an attorney on the staff of MSBA. And I said, Melissa, are you seeing other districts that are passing policies like this? Why? Is it constitutional? What does MSBA recommend? She acknowledged receipt of the policy, said she gave it to an attorney at MSBA to look at, and that she would get back to me. Next, I get a call from the school board president. He said, Jane, Melissa Randall did not contact me as a school board member, was there a school board member? She called the superintendent to let him know what was going on, because he was the one pushing this lovely civility policy. But she called the superintendent. Similar situations. Here she stood in those same issues, same people involved, parents, school board, school board's administration. But five years ago, she didn't say, oh, I am so with you, I am solid with you, I would do exactly what you're doing. No, she went behind the parents, behind that caring school board president, and she undermined those issues. So different time, different thing. When she wasn't trying to defend her membership, she was doing that. I have some other ideas with regard to how you can get the services, I'll be happy to give those to you, I don't have time right now. But I guess what I'd say, of all the recommendations for and against membership, my feeling is that membership in Camden Town School District should not be used, using our tax dollars to subsidize any organization that actively works against our interests. And again, oh, I still have a minute remaining. I'll tell you some.
Six seconds.
All right, I'll obey you, six seconds. I'll do that next time.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Next is Matt Burns, Agenda and Policy Updates.
Thanks for allowing us to speak, and I'll touch on what Senator Cunningham had to say in just a second. The first thing I, let me, first thing that I wanted to talk about is just the agenda in and of itself. This agenda is four pages long, and any, any number of these items could take up an entire meeting. Why we have so much thrown into one meeting is beyond me. I'm not sure why we are doing that. There's a lot of hyperlinks in there. I spent many hours just going through the agenda and just reading these things. I believe it comes out on Friday. Here we are on a Monday, so we only have a couple days to digest all of this information. It's just way too much. And so I would ask that we tailor these agendas down to one or two pages, and perhaps what we should do is maybe have some sort of a working session, a posted working session, and so that way we don't have these meetings that go on for six hours like we did last time. So that's one thing to consider. Now, with regard to MSBA, I think the policy updates that you're going to be asked to do a first reading on, I believe those also come from MSBA. And they seem good on the surface, but when you really read into them, they've got some real problems. And so I wanted to talk about a few of those. And one of those is this policy AC, which talks about illegal discrimination, harassment, retaliation. So there are some good things in there, it's not all bad. But one thing that really stood out to me, that really concerns me, is there's a section down here below, item number three, and so if you read it, it goes like this. If a student alleges sexual misconduct on the part of any district employee to any person employed by the district, that person will immediately report the allegation to Children's Division. And they should, statutorily, they have to, and I think we've already come across this situation, we're dealing with it now in litigation. But it doesn't really go far enough. You can take this policy and go a little bit further, and I think you should. So for example, the board should also be notified of such an allegation. Local law enforcement should be notified of such an allegation, because you may decide as a board, you may want to request the state of Missouri's assistance to investigate, so that you don't have your local law enforcement wrapped up investigating people that they work with on a day-to-day basis here at this school. That's a good thing to think about. So I don't think the policy goes quite far enough. The policy that is referred to as, let's see, JG-R1, and it talks about recording and cyberbullying and all of those types of things. It starts off very problematic, because it starts off with the word intimidation, but it doesn't define what intimidation is. That needs to be narrowly, narrowly defined, because anybody can be intimidated about anything. And so if we're not going to define it, then it shouldn't be in the policy. If you are going to define it, it needs to be narrowly done. That is a problem. Two minutes, oh, I got to move fast here. Here, here's another issue that I have with the recording. It says, recordings obtained while acting as a district employee or an agent may not be used for personal purposes or posted to social media unless approved by a supervisor. Doesn't give any provision for a whistleblower, somebody who finds something going on in the school that wants to get the word out, maybe they can't do it any other way. There's no provision for that in here. Whistleblower is something that you strongly should consider. That's a problem. Here is another issue. It says, likewise, even if recording is authorized under this policy, the superintendent or the designee may prohibit any person or entity from recording. That is, that's a real problem. If the policy gives parents or whoever the right to record in a certain situation, why would you want to give that authority to an unelected person to take that away from a parent? That makes no sense. We need to move away from this idea that unelected people have such tremendous power over the governing public. That's, that's a real problem. So I would strongly encourage you to not vote on these policy updates from MSBA until we can get some better language in there. And I'd like to talk about more things, but I believe I'm out of time.
Next is Casey Cloak, MSBA.
I'm going to make over here, seems to be the spot everybody's talking about. All right. Well, I don't need quite five minutes, unlike Matt shared, and not quite having enough time to go through all the links, but there was one agenda item that I had a little concern on, and so I sent the email, the board an email this morning, and I apologize, it was this morning. So I didn't expect a reply, and made sure I was here this evening to at least read the same email. So, good morning, Kim, SnR Three School Board. I reviewed the agenda for the upcoming board meeting taking place this evening, and have concerns to item D under the unfinished business, the MSBA membership. With this discussion on the agenda, I wondered if the board has reviewed all services that are currently being used by the entire district faculty through the MSBA membership. What I'm meaning towards is the resources, continued education, training, legal, legal and policy assistance, scholarships, et cetera. I want to ensure that before a decision is made, that you have a true, clear picture of everything currently being used by the district, and if the board were to decide to cancel the membership with the MSBA, how does the board intend to replace the current services being used and offered? Would the board also have the replacement services in place before canceling the current services available? I ask that the board undergo due diligence to truly understand the nature of the decision and the risks involved before making decision. So sincerely, Casey Cloak, Camden Town resident, Camden Town R3 alumni, current parent of the district, I have one child in the district, soon to be two in about two years, he'll be hitting kindergarten. The main thing, I have many friends and family that work for the district, and I just hope that services and resources continue to be made available to him, no matter what the decision is made. Thank you.
Next is Denise Alford, MSBA.
Well, I have to say that I am a graduate of Camden Town. I've had two wonderful daughters graduate from Camden Town. I've also been an employee here at Camden Town. And my concern is the withdrawing from MSBA. I, unfortunately, being a speech pathologist while working at Camden Town, I was the one who had to do the billing through MSBA or through, for Medicaid. And let me tell you, MSBA made it so much easier than me doing and filling out paper copies of Medicaid billing, which is truly time-consuming. MSBA monitors, school boards are allowed to follow the curriculum of the district's It provides scholarships to our students, it provides training for our school board and our staff. It also informs our district of national and state policies and regulations, and allows us to have a seat for legislative issues. And listening to some of all the issues that some of the people have, how can you change that if you're not there? If we're not representing our district in your beliefs? The MSBA is no longer participating with the National School Board Association, which sent out the memo that the board felt was offensive and led to this conversation. sent out the memo that the board felt was offensive and led to this conversation. This withdrawal from the National School Board Association shows that Missouri School Board Association is cautious about remaining apolitical. MSBA, Missouri School Board Association ensures that school board members are held to the same standard as administrators, teachers are held to, along with the school board members. An example of this is each board member should not tolerate the belittling and the harassment of other members of the school board, as well as our administrators. I hope that as a school board, you publicly discourage the politicization of policies in our school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kayla Michael or sorry, McDuffie?
Are you saying Michelle McDuffie?
Michelle, yes. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, Michelle.
Hi. It's okay. It happens every day. Thank you, President Griswold and the board for allowing me to address you. I'm Michelle McDuffie, but most people know me as Mickey. I'm a Laker, but I've yet to bleed purple, still waiting. I've been a classroom volunteer in the middle school back in the eighties. I've been a high school math and computers programming teacher in the high school in the nineties. I'm sure showing my age, aren't I? And I've been a substitute teacher. My husband and I have been supporters of the school district since we moved here in 1976. I've served on the education foundation and task force that recommended the current high school building. So I have an investment in the school district. I love the school district. But I would like to address the MSBA membership, and I respectfully ask you to consider all the benefits that are associated with being a member of MSBA. Briefly, some of these are providing COVID-19 resources, the Center for Education Safety to help with emergency planning, legally legislative updates sent to our school board members, scholarships available to our students, a service to review policy writing and updating to keep the district in legal compliance, Medicaid billing service at no cost to our district, board member training, and it provides us with a voice in the legislative process. This decision to be based solely on what is best for the students in our district. I believe the services offered by MSBA help our district to maintain its high standards and provide an environment for everyone learning every day. All in all, the yearly membership fee is probably quite a bargain. We expect our school board members to be well-trained, well-informed, responsive to citizen and parent concerns, independent thinkers, and prepared to make tough decisions. It's not an easy job. I know that. It's time consuming, but this is what you signed up for, and thank you for doing that. I ask that you look at the facts and that you ignore social media chatter. The questions about how our MSBA reacted to the National School Board letter to President Biden were satisfactorily answered by the executive director of MSBA at the October board meeting. I wasn't present, but I watched on my computer. Mistakes were made by the NSBA. The MSBA condemned the letter and withdrew its membership from the National Association. This is what you would expect an organization representing us to do. End of discussion. Mistakes are made in every organization, every school board, every business, every family, and by every individual. It is how we respond to these mistakes that is important. The MSBA's response to the mistake made by the National Association was appropriate and adequate. This is a personal remark, a couple of personal remarks. It's my hope that as every one of us comes into this building, that we leave our political views behind. Up until the last 10 years or so, this school board was apolitical. We never knew the political persuasions of the board members. It did not matter. What matters was how they served the best interests of our students. It's important to remember that you're here to listen to the views of everyone in our district. A district that respects and encourages different opinions will thrive and be successful. Lastly, this is in support of one of your board members. Lastly, I'm not a fan of social media. I do have to admit that I cannot get enough adorable golden retrievers on Facebook. I love that. But I'm particularly dismayed by the social media attacks on one of our school board members. I do not see, I do not want to see any of you attacked in such a manner. A political activist has taken advantage of the NSBA letter controversy to begin a political attack on our board member. Statements about her are inaccurate and unkind. This is reprehensible and unacceptable. I'm almost out of time, so I can't say everything other than I love this school district, I love this community, and I want to ensure that our kids are prepared for successful, fulfilling lives. And I want to thank each and every one of you for being here and for serving us. I appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last one is Julie Thomas, MSBA.
Hello. I'm back again, and I do appreciate everyone's service on this board. I do. I understand that it's, the times we are in are not normal times. If anyone lives in America, we didn't have Baltimore burning and Minneapolis burning 10 years ago, did we? We are in a culture war. This isn't about politics. This is about the Constitution. This is about the history of America. This is about the 1619 Project, which historians across this country clearly called terrible history. When you have critical race theory activists hiding under social emotional learning and proudly admitting that they're doing that, cell is critical race theory. And we're promoting it across this country. We're promoting it here. And I can tell you, as a Common Core activist who fought at the state Capitol, spent years, actually, I spent years of my life on my dime fighting educational agendas that came directly from Marxist playbooks. You know what the number one Marxist play is? Create Race Worse. I'm going to tell you, this is not about getting along anymore. It's not. This is about saving a free people, the United States of America. Four percent of the world's population is the United States of America. And you know what we do? We rescue the rest of the world because that's who we are. That's who we are. And they want to get rid of 1776 and that document and call it 1619 and say the whole country had slaves. Let me tell you something. The whole world had slaves in 1619. The whole world. And you know what else? There were more European white slaves under the Ottoman Empire than America had in 1776. There were African American. You can go look it up. I'm a historian. I know these things. We are sitting here teaching our kids blatant lies without a conscience because there's some people that have their feelings hurt, and they think they need to wear the label victim for the rest of their life. They don't have to wear that label. They can call it out. This is America. You're not a victim in America. You can walk away from whatever you want to in this country. And to say, and like, you know, I just, I can't handle it anymore. But let me tell you, instead of teaching critical race theory and bogus history, let's talk about James Forten or Crispus Attucks. Do you know who Crispus Attucks is? No. You don't, because you don't teach it anymore. Because these were guys who were black who fought in the Revolutionary War, and we're not teaching them. How about Peter Salem, Armistead Lafayette? Do you teach these kids about these black men that were free men who fought in the Revolutionary War because they loved the Declaration of Independence so much? Do we talk about the Northwest Territories in our history classes? Or how about special field orders that were given to slaves after the Civil War? Do we talk about that? We don't talk about it, do we? Because today, everything is about how we're feeling instead of truth. Truth matters. And if we're going to throw truth to the wind to emotional, social, it's not learning. What are we doing? Because we're not teaching kids how to read. In fact, since Common Core, we've gone so far down, it's not even funny. And their whole goal wasn't about teaching, ever. It was about collecting data on kids to see who might be racist through the surveys that we're giving our kids. And MSBA is all about it. And I know, because when I fought Common Core at the Capitol, you know who was against the parents? It was MSBA. They don't care about you. They like their pretty little seats, and they like to lord it over others in their fancy boards. I'm not saying that everyone on that board has that mentality, but the history of MSBA is not for parents. And you know what? We have doctorates and degrees in our own district. Can we stop being addicted? Addicted to nanny state overlords? It's amazing to me. I taught my daughter how to read at a third grade level after spending two years in preschool. She didn't know all of her letters. I'm a classical pianist. I'm not a teacher. But I could teach her to read by the end of kindergarten at a third grade level. If I can do that, we don't need all these organizations telling us how to do things. It's ridiculous. Anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes our list of comments. And next is the audit reports. So we'll move to advisory reports. Would you like to read your reports again?
Sure. Yeah. I'm going to stray away from reading, straight from it, just because everyone has it. So the first thing I talked about is the Central Ozark Medical Center and Health. And I just want to say how in favor I am of these services, especially in today's age. I think it's really important that students get free mental health care. It's just very important. And then the.
Can you guys keep it down a little bit in the background here? Go ahead.
Sorry, I'll talk about it. Then the second thing I talked about is basically just listening and showing our respect to the others. I think it's really important that everyone in this room, we come in with an open mind, and we don't have any predetermined emotions, like we know how we're going to vote. I think that if we all come in and we have an open mind and we just listen and we learn, then we will become better representatives of the school. And that's basically it. And then my report's on there for everyone to read.
All right. I have a couple of things before I move into my actual report. First of all, I wanted to thank the board for allowing us to have some sort of normalcy in our district, and I didn't realize how some other districts in the state were operating until I actually went to our debate tournament this past weekend. There are districts that don't even allow their debate teams to compete at certain tournaments because of their COVID protocols. There are schools that require their students to wear masks in debate rounds and in events where they're acting, and so you only get to see half of their face. We actually had virtual judges for the whole tournament, meaning that we had live competitors in the room, and then all of our judges were judging us through a Zoom call. And it didn't really occur to me how crazy some other parts of the world are acting right now, specifically with education and even extracurriculars, until that moment. So I did want to say thank you so much for allowing us, even just in speech and debate alone, we get to go and we get to compete, and we don't have to worry about COVID protocols keeping us from being amazing. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. The second thing I have is about board policy review. I'm glad that we're getting it up and running, but I do have a couple of questions. So my first question is what thought process was used to determine the policies that you all are reviewing tonight?
So can I actually sit to you? Because I thought we were going to wait on you to give us the policies that, I mean, I thought that's how we left it at the last meeting, was you were going to give us the ones that you felt were priority, but then I don't know, I didn't know what happened. So then we were just given other policies. So how?
I reached out to Miley, and she responded back as I shared with the board that, you know, she didn't have any necessarily pressing items, but she had items from her board report that could be a possible starting place for the board, and I shared that. And then it was decided that the board policies that were, basically that were being suggested to be modified due to a change in statute, that those were the ones that the board should review. And, you know, that suggestion came from Mrs. Griswold.
But I do have the same question. So, and I think we need to go back about how we're doing this, because I think we need to go to have a committee instead. So I was going to talk about that. I'm the agenda, I'm just, you know, but I did want to know where the policies that were put onto the agenda, the draft, where, whose ideas those were because they weren't mine. And it looks like they're MSBA's. So is somebody contacting you at MSBA to send us these policies to review? Because there were other ones that are on there that are all over the place in our policy that I took off. Like, they're not in the chunk that we had discussed. The last meeting, we said, let's, you mentioned it, Nancy, like, let's do A through AA or a lot of them. So I, I mean, are they, is somebody emailing you these recommendations from MSBA?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, because their attorneys are watching what's happening at the federal and state level with changes in statute and then trying to update the policies to coincide with that so that they're not in conflict.
So these all came from MSBA, and these are the ones that were legal. And then I asked the one, the one that Mr. Thompson was potentially working on to be also legal.
Essentially, I think where we left it was basically a systematic approach. You know, Nancy said, we start here and just work right through. With being trumped by anything that statute changes require and those being trumped by anything that students, administrators, staff want us to review or have recommendations to change.
So we did not make those edits in those policies.
Okay. Yeah, I knew that. I just was questioning the ones that are on the, and I did some math, so I counted, and if I can count correctly, there's about 250 policies and administrative procedures total, which if you're wanting to get through all of them in a year, you'd have to do about 21 per month. There's only nine on here, so I was concerned as far as that.
I don't think the process, our approach right now is going to be a good one for you. So I think we're going to have to do it.
These ones aren't in legal compliances, is that right?
There are updates that are needed because of changes in statute with the policies that are on tonight.
And to be totally honest, that seems like a daunting task, but when we get to a point that we review policies that you guys find issues with and make any appropriate changes, and then we get through policies that we have to modify, do changes in statutes, there's all, everything else is kind of, there's a lot of stuff that's just great. I mean, and there really is, that won't take any time to, you know, make the way we read through it, where we say, I don't have any issues with that, or why do we even still have that? Or, you know, so once we get through the ones that, that people want changes and ones that we have to make changes, everything else, we'll probably be able to breeze through it pretty quickly.
If we go through this process systematically, you're right, there's a lot of policies. But at the end of our policy, it'll say the last time it was reviewed. And so like Pam said, we'll read your policy and we'll say, well, we just reviewed this last year, and we made the change, or we didn't, it's okay. And then we just, we just go on. So there might be some that would require us changing wording or whatever, but I think it's the way to go is just systematically, write off a chunk each time, and then we'll always have those policies that will have to be changed because of statute, you know, so, but, you know, it's our job.
And I'm sure there's going to be some in there, like, we'll pay our bills in line.
It's our job, and make this time come in.
And I'm sure there's a lot of letter, honestly, pretty redundant, because in 1984, they created this policy, and in 1997, they created this policy, and they basically said the same thing.
As far as the legalities of her policies, state law will trump any of her policies, so they might need to be updated with her law, but I don't think it's necessary your board policy must read this way for our law.
You just frankly don't want your policy to steer you in a way that would, if somebody's more apt to read the policy maybe than the statute, being the school employees. being the school employees, that you wanna make, make sure that they're, they are in line so that they're making good decisions and acting in the legal-
Oh, I can do this, even though-
Right.
Right now, right now, it's illegal to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, keep going.
Yeah, so that, yeah, and that's whole, so my just, my big thing has always been not the legal issues, but the ones that only we experience here and just making sure that we're not only reviewing things because there's changes in state statutes, um, and just making sure we're keeping up with that. So that kind of ends that policy discussion, so we can move on to my board report. Which this month, I took a little bit of a different approach and I'm talking about, um, mental health for students and kind of the culture that surrounds public education today. And school now for us is a lot different from when many of you people in this room were in school. And I think that now, more than ever, it has been normalized for students to value their educational achievements, maybe is the best way to phrase it, over their mental and physical wellbeing, which I think we can all agree is not, uh, the order in which your priorities should be. And that's a common thing. I know I hear it all the time, you probably hear it too. Like, oh, I'll just push off, like, actually taking care of myself so I can finish this essay or so I can do this study for this test. And I think that really comes from a culture in public schools where we teach to a standard rather than incentivizing growth. So it's, oh, you're below basic, proficient, or advanced. And that causes issues for people in all three of those situations. So if you are below basic, right, it's, oh, well, I'm not gonna meet the standard, why do I even need to try? Like, that's very discouraging. If you're on level, it's, oh, I'm already on level, why do I need to work hard, I'm already here? If you're above level, it's, oh, I'm set for the next three years, I don't need to work any harder. So what we see is there's not growth, it's just stagnation overall. And I can tell you even personally, when we used iReady back when we were in eighth grade, me and one other girl in my English class tested out of iReady. There were no longer lessons for us to do, so the district could no longer measure our growth that we had made in eighth grade English because there was nothing else for us to do because we advanced past that. And so when everyone else was doing their iReady lessons, we'd just kinda sat there and read a book or played on our phones. So I think we need to move more towards incentivizing growth rather than standards for students. And I also think a, a big part of my report just talks about that cultural aspect of how in schools we need to be making it clear that it's not, you're here to meet this certain standard. It's, you're here to learn, you're here to grow, you're here to come in, come in, learn things, and go out into the world better than when you entered. Which I don't think is necessarily the understanding that at least we as students have. I'm not sure if that's what you're wanting, um, and maybe it's just not being communicated properly. And in terms of actual, I guess pragmatic ways to fix that, a lot of districts, a lot of states across the country have been trying different things. I've seen a couple districts that have had like designated days off for teachers and students where it's just a day, you're not expected to do any work, it's just a day for everyone to kind of collect themselves. There are districts that have so many like mental health days that are excused absences for students every year. There's a lot of different ways to do it, and I think that there's a lot of different ways we could go about better supporting the students and helping them understand how to actually take care of themselves and understand that even in the real world, you shouldn't prioritize work over your actual wellbeing of you as a person. And so I am asking you as a board to please take some sort of action in order to better help that. Because again, in culture today, with students, with teenagers especially, it has become so accepted to just treat ourselves terribly and use education as an excuse, which I'm a believer that you should come first and your education should come second. And so I'm happy to provide any input you would like beyond that. Uh, I didn't recommend anything specific, just because I know there's a wide range of things that we could do. But I do hope that we can do something that is going to help support the students.
So what you talked about was almost two different things that kind of happened together, right? So what you're, when you're talking about the iReady and you're testing out, so what you're, what you experienced is outcome-based education instead of competency-based. And so we have been teaching as a society, even when we went, so everybody comes to the same outcome. But what you want is individual, individual actually outcomes. And so we have to stop teaching for the group and try to do something for the individual. And it can't always be for the gifted. Not everybody tests as indig gifted, that's not right, you know, right fitting, right setting for most learners. So when you hear, um, oh, teaching to the standards, teaching to the standards, well, that comes from the top down to us. We have to teach to the standard. So we have to find a way to still do that, to adhere to the standards that were given to us in this amazing Common Core and before that, right?
Yeah.
And, but we can pick our own curriculum. So while we can meet those standards, we can still do the curriculum. And there's been a lot of cursism about group teaching, where we have four kids in a pod, we're a student-led and this, potentially you would be teaching the other three kids, right?
Yeah.
So you guys can all get an A. And that is something that I, um, hope this year that we can get, we can start talking about. And then the mental health part of it, the extra days and different stuff, well, what is causing that? What, what are, what are we piling onto our teachers? Why do we have class sizes that are too thin? You know, we, we have, we can give them all the mental health days here and there, it's not gonna fix the root of what's causing that over here. So we have to manage expectations better.
Yes, I very much agree with that.
Totally living in that lane right now, so I appreciate you picking, bringing it up.
Yeah, and I, I think that a lo, for a long time, education has been based on equality, right? Giving everyone the same thing and expecting you to all come out the same. But it really should be based more on equity, right? It's just a simple fact, some students need more attention maybe than other students, right? And so just giving two students the same thing doesn't mean they're going to end up with the same outcome. So even if we do have to meet those outcomes, I think that growth can be, and I was talking, one of my teachers used to teach in Iowa for the longest time, and she said that at their school, they had, if you could prove that you had a year's worth of growth, there were five days of school that they had scheduled that you could take a day off of school. So you'd pick one of those five days if you had shown a year's growth, because they were all growth-based rather than just, you need to meet this standard. So even if you were way below level, if you showed over the year that you could learn that amount, you were rewarded as such, which I think, you know, again, just another-
That was, that was another outcome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you, and this is actually, I'd like to hear from both you guys. Do you think it would be beneficial for, from the beginning, I mean, not just now, but all the way back to when you guys started school? Do you think it would have benefited you or your teachers along the way to be able to individualize your education depending on how you learned best?
Absolutely. And I think, for myself, I think I've been in a unique situation as I've always been the gifted kid. So a lot of times, the gifted kids kind of like, oh, they already know what they're doing, so they're fine. Or they can help teach other people, which is fine, like, you can learn from other students and whatnot. But I think understanding that every student does learn differently can be, and especially in the elementary grades. I know, I have a younger sister who she learns very differently to how I did. And so I sit down and I try to teach her things and help her with her math homework. And I'm trying to use the same tactics that I know work for me, but they just don't work for her because she learns in a different way. And so she needs that different set of skills that I just don't have. And so a teacher would probably be obviously better suited to do that. So I think that would have benefited me at least.
And I've always been like Miley, I've always been like in the higher of my class. But I do think it would have helped everyone if we all had a little bit more, uh, individualism. But I think, I mean, I don't wanna say it's out of the question, but I do think it'd be a struggle to get to that point. And we need a lot more resources, and I just think it might be a little bit unreasonable. But I think that there's middle ground that we can find within it.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I agree, it's, it's definitely a challenge. And there, there's lots of, lots of reasons why it's challenging. You know, and, and quite honestly, one of our biggest challenges is that you're right. You know, that this system as a whole is set up that this is how we teach everyone. This is what we want everyone to level, we want everyone to get to. But this is, you know, and it's, it's gotten to the point where it's very structured and it's taken a lot of control away from the individual teachers, from administrators, from the, you know, the building level, um, and honestly from us.
We're, we're hearing that the teachers are bogged down with a lot of time spent on data collection, so they don't have any time to do any of this stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's-
So, so a lot in that comes from many different angles. We have two different testing, we have, we're talking about a testing system now. We have all these testing systems, I don't even know which ones are really required for speech, not all of them.
Yeah.
So a lot of that is, and we heard the other day that, um, I heard in a meeting the other day that, that the, it was during the tax committee, that teachers are being, and I don't know what came up, but to have extra data for them to do for the special services. So, so for them to try to do that with the, I think it was for speech or something. I don't know if that was verified or whatever, but it was just something that was brought up. So at least they thought that they had to do something different. So we have to really, well, I heard at the MSBA conference that Desi, the head lady, um, oh, Marge, Marge or anyone, she, they love data collection, you know? They, they, so we have to really be careful how, that was during the state core education. They, and so we, we are getting all of this from up here and we need to do our best down here to, to meet those standards mostly, driving our own course.
Yeah, I've actually, I've spent, I'm actually at this point about the last year of my life, spending a lot of time talking to people on a national level who have made a huge impact in education in general. People would have institutes named after them because they, you know, they had a vision and actually, you know, made it work. And that is the overriding factor, that all of them have told me is find a way to get teachers in front of students that are able and willing to teach the student.
Yeah.
So that's, that's actually reassuring that you guys are kinda on the same page, like, you know, because everyone learns differently. Some are visual, some are repetitive, some are, can read it in a book once and just instantly know it. And teaching in one of those ways isn't going to teach every child. But every child is teaching.
Absolutely.
So we're, we're gonna ask still going to, are you, do you have more?
I just have one more point. So I, I agree with everything you have just said. The one thing I do wanna point out and one of the reasons why I think it is so difficult for us to maybe attempt to kind of overhaul our whole structure is that there are many classes specifically at the high school that are not Camdenton curriculum, right? So it's your AP, your IB, your dual credit classes that you don't write the curriculum for. And so that, and maybe that means that we need to take a more teacher-based approach rather than curriculum-based approach. I know personally, I haven't taken hardly any classes throughout high school that have been actual Camdenton curriculum because I've done AP and IB and whatnot.
But you're like on your third year of college.
Working on it. So just understanding that aspect of it as well.
Not going into education yet.
Oh goodness, no.
You could just drop the mic and walk.
Well, I have a thing of a general question, if you don't mind me asking. I don't wanna go off on a tangent here, but something you said earlier about how things have changed a lot. Since we were one in school here and you all have been through the system. Is it, and I may not have the answer for this yet, but is it difficult to cha, change buildings every two years? Is there an adjustment period that you all struggle with? Would you prefer to see something where we have, you know, I, I went kindergarten through sixth grade in Dogwood. Six years there. Or was it easier just to, you know, it was, we had your friends moving with you? I'm old.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But your friends go with you, is it really not that bad? I worry about the kids in the adjustment period, moving building to building to building.
Yeah. I know for me, well, I went to OBE, so my first four years were, or five years, I guess, were all in the same building. And so I think the moving, the fast-paced kind of moving after that, honestly, I think really helped me to mature a little bit more. Because when you're only in a building with students that are very close to your age, you learn to act your age. And so it doesn't force you to grow up too fast because you're around other people that are way older than you, but it doesn't incentivize you to be immature because you're around people that are way younger than you all the time. So that's one of the reasons I like that we kind of divide it up into two, 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 and then four, because you, you just go, and it is the same set of people that you're with and you get to know your people. And then you know maybe one above and one below you. But other than that, you don't have, you're not forced to socialize with them. Because I don't even, I like talking to freshmen sometimes. I'm sorry freshman, if you're watching this, but some of y'all are just crazy. And I, dealing with freshmen sometimes makes my head hurt. But being able to be with people that are close in your age group, I think helps a lot.
All right, appreciate it.
Yeah, and I think I agree. I think it's important that, I like to see the visual progress. And so I think, okay, well, I get to move up to this building and that's more opportunities, bigger school, uh, more classrooms. And I just, I like the aspect that, okay, physically moving up in the world. And it just helps, I think, feel more successful than we might be.
Just thinking, I'd love to talk to you a little bit. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We're on to consent item. I wanted to just ask a couple of questions on what item do we need to move out then?
Not necessarily, unless it, you don't get the answer you're looking for, maybe then you might wanna move it out, but-
No, no, it wasn't necessarily that. Mine was just on the professional development plan. And then just more general questions. And I know I asked this in a given, but I thought it might be good just to discuss it a little bit. But how is this committee chosen? Because we, there's some non-teachers on it, so I didn't know, on that, how's that work?
Dr. Neal helps oversee that, so, Dr. Neal?
We have teachers on there based on the population of each building. And then there are the professional development committee regulations. There's a, there's a green book that goes by and we just pretty much took the instructions out of that book on how to, how to seat this, but you have to have some administrator there, they're non-voting members. They, or I'm a non-voting member, I'm there in an advisory role. And that's, I mean, other non-teachers, I don't, I don't know any of the non-teachers on there.
Like librarians?
Well, they're considered teachers.
Oh, so, okay. Do, so who picks that, the non, who, who gets, picks them? Is there a?
In the email, I described that your, each building nominates a, a group of people and then, or however many seats they have, and they send them to the principal and the principal sends them to me.
Okay, so I'll let the, the teacher and everybody vote for it?
Well, I, I don't know how it's done on the individual building level. I'm not, I just get the list.
Okay. And then for the, um, okay, so for the, the professional and the funding, do we still have instructional coaches?
Not, I mean, you know what we have, there're the, like, the, the new teacher coaches and then the, there's the, the title.
I just had it on here, so I was just curious what, what we were doing with the title to funding for those positions. For that, for that professional development, so that is professional development for those coaches?
I'm gonna have to, I'm not, I'm not with you on that.
It's on the paging. So all the, the funding, is that the funding for the professional development for those different line items? We just got presented this pain and consent item, so, okay. We don't know why that, we haven't discussed or gone through it much.
Is this what, is this the page? These, these are the amounts allotted for each one of those trainings.
Okay.
Or, or programs.
Does they, does Capstone include, is there anything for Capstone in there, where's that? Is it in there? Was it just, you know, there's not a line item now?
So Cap, can I?
Yeah, please.
Uh, Capstone, they're all, every staff member, as you saw, we're at top, top of the group. So there's all the-
Sorry, can you repeat that?
All staff members were- So, there's all the, all staff members, we're at Todd Littler, because it was the back-to-school meeting. Um, the, the new teacher academy, if they happen to be at Capstone or Special Ed or whatever, they're in that line. Uh, Tim Brown, uh, if they're a new teacher or a teacher that's interested in professional learning communities or someone that's a building cent, those, all the teachers are, all teachers and principals are included in Title II funding. So, um, the, the I-ready training, that's training that all of our teachers get, whether you're Special Ed, you're, you're, um, gifted or, or whatever. Instructional coaches, regular classroom teachers. Um, instructional support days, again, those folks are invited to those days if they, if they participate with a specific grade level. Um, and the summer curriculum camps, any teacher was invited that wanted to come and have the time to come in and do those curriculum camps. So, and then leader and me at the building levels, all of those folks that, um, have anything to do with those building, most junior are involved in that training also. Sorry.
That's good. Um, I think that other question, I, I am understanding what you're saying now, the top, what about the instructional coaches? That sixteen thousand four hundred dollars is, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Dill, but that's what we can pay them out of federal funds and keep, and, and keep our local funds here? Is there a way to do that?
That's for extra work that they do, like preparation for new teachers and, and some of those, um, summer curriculum camps?
I'll touch real quick also on, uh, on H. Those of you that aren't aware, what's kind of going on with that? We had a fiber line that got chopped through, a fiber optics line, um, that leads down to LCTC. We put a Band-Aid on it a little while back. It's, I mean, it's a temporarily fixed to the situation.
It, it feeds the maintenance and, and the transportation as well.
Troy and myself met with, with Sheena this week. We, um, we, we put the bid out. As you can see, there's only one bid on here, but we only got one bid back that's a really good bid. I mean, as we kind of talked, we kind of broke it down, and it's something that kind of needs to get done.
Well, it's, it's something, it's something that we, we really need to do now, and we will definitely need to do.
This bid, and, and Sheena can talk more on it, but bid is, it's, it's, uh, it's setting us up to, the work they're gonna do will set us up for anything extra that might need to come out of the pipeline later, that it's, it leaves us with a lot of openings.
We did some proactive planning, um, just regarding some future updates since we would have to bore anyway. So, we'll already be in that process, and that way, we already have some extra, some strands available to do some updates to other buildings as those come due. Plus, it would set us up if we have any other issues that we could, um, not have to bore from the corner of this building down to the, to the junction box that'll go there at the, the intersection. So, it does some proactive planning as well, since we will already be in the ground. So, I tried to put all of that information, um, in the little, the little report, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions with what that might look like or entail.
I remember discussing it before, so I, I find.
Yeah. And we, we kind of talked about it in the meeting. We thought, right now, I mean, if we get this going before the ground gets hard or whatever, if we have to do this when the ground's frozen and we get more bid, who knows what the cost can be? I mean, right now, we've got a really good bid in. To accept it, I think would be a great idea.
Do you have any more discussion on consent items?
I, I just wanted to point out, so, I'm responsible for this end up, but, uh, you know, at last spring regional meeting in Waynesville, uh, we were given the whole MSIP six plan. And we're still kind of, I, I'll call it a grace period, but at some point, this is the way our school district and every school district in Missouri will, uh, be evaluated. So, I just went through that real quick today when I saw that we had professional development. And so, every time this, um, this detail showed up, I just kind of printed those pages for you. There are many more pages, as you'll see. I started just listing them all, and then I was like, oh, wait, that'll be a lot of paper. So, I kind of stopped, as you see there on that last page, more, many more parameters in this document. But anytime it talked about professional development, so, you know, that is something that we have to have in our district. We have to support it with a budget. We have to, and then, you know, even like this first one says, um, not, not only our staff, but we, local boards and superintendents, the CEO, have to have professional learning. So, it, it's all coming down to a point where at some point, we're gonna have to look, make sure we're doing enough.
Yeah, I was, I was watching that.
So, that's why I provided that to you, so.
Yeah, I, I was watching another schools that are training, uh, an MSBA training, and she mentioned that MSBA had pushed to add L1, so I was reading up on it a little bit, um, where it added extra duties to the local school boards. I thought that was interesting that that's new in MSIP six, but, um.
Well, I think input, and that's a process they had, is they had input from, every school district had this in Brad Farm. And so, every school district had an opportunity to say, why is that in there? Question it or add into. So, um, it wasn't just one entity's input. It was all the school districts that wanted to. I don't, I don't know that, I didn't provide any input, so I don't know that everybody did, but you could, and, and that's it.
I'll come next year, so we'll get that.
Sure. Yeah, and that's what we have to do. And, and it might be, um, it might be something we need to have a special session on, to look at the whole document and say, these are the parameters they're gonna be looking at for our school district and every school district, so.
Yeah.
And then, then the last thing, I'll talk to you about professional development. If any of you want to attend, uh, that's that last page. The safety training is gonna be right here in Camden Town, so you don't have to, you don't have to tell, and there's no cost. And like for our SROs, they get post-credit, you know, training hours that they need every year. They could get four out of this. So, um, I, that's why I wanted you to see it, sir. And because they had a big enough room, we went to Mid County. They asked for me, you know, to suggest places that would hold, and we talked about this room, but then parking's an issue. You know, we have, you know, sixteen other school district vehicles up, or so. So, that's why we, uh, decided on the Mid County Firehouse. They provide that room free, and they, and then CES, uh, Center for Educational Safety, they provide the instructors again. It's no cost to us. Uh, but those guys could get four hours of training credit, or two hours, depending upon how many times, how many of those sessions they wanted to.
Dr. Neal, do you help people guide them to what opportunities they have for professional development? Can you get that to them?
Well, he's got this, and I also gave it to Officer Williams to share with his SROs, and I gave it to Sheena. And I gave it to Sheena because, you know, there are some cyber security and cyber issues. So, first I got, got to know the subject. And then I think Mr. Hunter, Mr. Hunter, Mr. Mindtend and I had to have the additional hours, which this committee was right here in our backyard. But then Mr. Hunter was gonna share it with the district safety committee. Again, they don't have to go, but it's free, and it might be some pretty good information.
I usually do like to see.
And then I was also the one, and I completed later, but, uh, so I went to the first day of training, save schools and colleges, and so there was that one handout about the safety, the things that was on. And then they were also kind of enough to have these little round footballs.
Oh, thank you.
So, you know, you give that him stuff, he goes, he's me, that's, so, that's who, that's who that all came from, so.
Thank you.
Move to a current consent items, of course, not a?
Home neighbor?
Hi.
People of bills, I, I was just curious on the overall process. Do we require invoices and receipts for some of these? Are there a lot of questions, so? Is it provided to us?
No.
Board? So, I, I've talked to a couple of different school districts, and their board has actually presented with the invoices. Is that something we could do? Because I know I emailed you this, or, you know, earlier today, I have like a hundred questions, but invoices would alleviate a lot, I, you know, to not have to bother everybody with little stuff.
Sure, if the board would like, uh, like the invoices, I just, um, you know, it's gonna take a little bit more work on the accounts payable department to scan those in, but, you know, if the board wants to do that, we would certainly do that. We're here at the will of the board.
Do you look for something in particular, like, like the early bills or just all the check previews?
Well, do we, uh, now, yes, we can do it all electronically, but then it does take some time to put it. I mean, every time, this is why, when I look at this bill list, and I see the amount, that I think, why, why are we doing this? Then I just call and say, there's a bill on here for two thousand eighteen dollars or so-and-so. What is that? And so, I always get the answer to my question, but I, I don't know that I want to see an invoice for everything that's listed here. But, I mean, we can, but it, it will take more staff time probably to not only just list, you know, city of Camden Town, but then insert an actual mid, a visual that's, this is the bill.
I think spending money is in making sure that we know what we're spending money on is probably one of our biggest responsibilities as a board.
And that's why we get this. And, and like I said, you can certainly question anyone that, you know, like an OBE list station. I mean, we gotta have, we gotta take care of our sewage, you know?
Sometimes it's the, yeah, sometimes it's the weekends. Sometimes it's the weekend, and we're going through stuff, and might not get to it until last night, having questions, and then running through this morning, Monday. So, I think from, almost to be more efficient to do it this way.
You know, when I do that, if I'm reading the, this over the weekend, I just make a note, it's a ask, you know, ask about, and then I put whatever the company is, two thousand eighteen dollars in a question mark. So that on Monday morning, I, or I can type that even on Sunday and send it to Tim and say, I have a question, what was this? And he'll get right back to me and say, you know, that was Hawthorne Elementary had something, something.
Maybe it's. It sounded unrealistic expectation, because there are a lot of districts that do that, that attach their invoices. I mean, just in an effort to be transparent, I don't think it's, um, I mean, it would take some adjustment, but I just.
I, I, I mean, but it will take staff time, so I don't know.
We'll have to.
Would it be?
We should evaluate that, whether we're gonna have to hire another staff or something.
Maybe to start, maybe we could ask, maybe have a criteria, if anything, over a thousand dollars. I mean, I, I skim through here. I don't stop at every line item. If it's twenty dollars, you know, so I, if, but if that's, if that's not gonna help much, then I'm okay with it.
And again, there's some that, city of Camden Town, city of Osage Beach Water and Sewer, that's pretty spore-tory right there. We can charge for them, to get, to get water and get whatever.
But there's, there's other charges on there, like flowers. You know, we, we have no idea what that would be for.
Sure, sure.
Well, the Allex has the Hilton with nobody's name on it. I mean, I, I think, I would like to see invoices, entercies or reimbursement. I mean, we already got the audit report, how we're so removed from segregation of duties. I think that it's appropriate. So, I don't know if we have to go on something like that.
Um, I, I would, I would work best, and I think our office would, if, you know, if we had a motion, uh, to do that, if you'd like that. And especially, I can go back to the girls in the office to say, uh, or the ladies in there, that, yeah, it's gonna take a little bit more time and effort, but this is the will of the board. Here you go.
Yeah, we can maybe, we can even consider non-utilities at this time.
What is the current checking balances processes we have in place?
So, can I?
Please do.
Each building, so I'm the final, it, it kind of, to go back to your question about a process. So, um, there is a building secretary or a director's secretary that will put in the purchase order, and usually it's from a requisition from a teacher, if the teacher requests something. They turn it into a purchase order. The building principal or the director will approve it, and then it comes to me. I'm the final approval.
It's a P card, though?
No.
No.
It's everything.
Okay.
Everything. And so, um, so I'm the final approver, and so that way, I can look over here and go, oh, that's red. So, I pick up the phone and say, okay, what are we gonna do here? You know, what's the plan? That's why you get amendments, um, so we can shift money around when it's needed. Um, then, uh, the same thing for reimbursements. I, I'm the final approver on reimbursements. Um, even Dr. Hadfield sends his stuff over, and I sign off on it, and, and, um, so that's kind of the process, how the PO is created and how it gets to me and how it's approved. Then, once the item is here and checked in, they, they go back into Sysfin and they check the item here. And then that triggers us to know, okay, then it's sent up for payment. Um, and once all, all the items are here, then that's when we put it on the bill list, so.
Which is board policy?
Mm-hmm.
And just how we purchase them.
Why, I think just for the check review, I mean, it's, like, non-utilities. So, do you want to make a motion now, or you want?
Are we questioning the process, or are we questioning the payments?
Um, I think we, well, from my perspective, I would like to see what the invoices are that were asked, being asked to make differently.
So, we're questioning the payments?
They vote? I don't know if we're questioning it, or just want to make sure we have a student, just, just.
I think, to Kelly's comment, it would alleviate a lot of communication traffic back and forth, you know, what's this item? What's this item? It's like, you get a list there, and you just.
I mean, because I only sent you three today, but I could've sent you a hundred, you know? And so, I know that's not an efficient use of your time to sit on the Monday with the board meeting to answer all the questions that I have. Um, because if all of us have, you know?
I, I get that, but I also think that it's a lot more efficient than it would be having to have somebody scan in every invoice. And, I mean, I think that we're just talking all kinds of man-hours there.
Don't they already have to do that, though, in courses?
No, so, um, what we do, and this is when the auditing process happens, when they come on site, they'll randomly go through it and say, a report like this, we have to print out a report, and they'll go, okay, I want to see this one, this one, this one, this one, and this one. We have to go, we pull the purchase orders, and so they can see that process from the very beginning all the way through to the completion of the thing.
So, the invoice is not attached to the check in your system?
Everything is five papers.
Okay, that, that probably, I, that's a little bit outdated for me to process, but that could be, you know, that was kind of.
So, that's just the system that we're working on. So, we do a lot of, it's all, I mean, like, we have boxes and lots of, you know, documents. And think about JAX.
And if those documents catch on fire or disappear with your backup?
We have, we have everything in the system. We just don't have the invoices in the system. We have it, it was checked in a hundred percent. It's marked in the system, so we know we got all of those materials.
Do you have the scanner system for, are you a tool tracking? Like, are you scanning in receipts? Like, how are you keeping receipts?
There, everything is attached to either the purchase order, or it's attached to, um, or it's attached to the reimbursement form.
On all paper, in boxes, in stores, or, okay.
And there's twofold, that's twofolds, because regardless, when the auditor comes, she's gonna, or he is gonna want it. I mean, we pull documents, that's what they pull.
Yes.
And we use them a lot. We use them a lot. So, when I do after-school, when I bill back for fuel for after-school program, we go and we pull the, the, you know, it used to be Lakefront Oil, but it's called the name right now, but anyway, we pull that in, the last invoice, so I know how much to charge back for fuel.
Right, you're, I've done this before. You're in a storage facility, and you're going to a box for that here, and you're looking for that.
Those are all in files that are in accounts payable, the file cabinets in the accounts payable.
How far back do you have to go?
We keep five years.
So, you have all of that over there?
Not in that room. The current is in that room.
Where, like, I'm saying, if you ever get audited, like, five or six years back?
We have it. It's in a vault.
I don't disagree that there may be better ways to do that, but it sounds like we need to look at the process rather than, it's a bit, I mean, I, can you estimate how many hours we're gonna use scanning those documents?
I can't. I mean, if we're gonna do it, we just have to do it for a month.
There are web-based systems on there in place to do just that.
I, I, I can't.
Yeah, I mean, other school districts aren't doing that well.
Something a little better.
Or that, that system, at this point.
Well, I'll change the process, is to, you know, get it before you can do it.
That's fair, yeah.
Tell them somebody now, you need to start doing this, in the job description.
Yeah.
Well, that's weird that we weren't already...
That's my biggest concern, is that we don't have any of that electronic. And, I mean, there's, there's programs out there that are basically another check. I mean, they, you scan invoices, and so then they automatically recognize this is for this, this is the payment. So, that's another level of, one, check, and two, security.
Well, but, but, they have to integrate with our Sysfin financial system. That's the piece. So, I mean, you can't go out and get like a Peachtree, or I don't know what the accounting systems are out there anymore. But, you can't just go grab something and have it, you know, feed into our Sysfin system.
Hopefully, they have an application. If they don't, then they're outdated.
Well, and what I can tell you is when... Well, what I can tell you is, when Kerry's folks are headed, and he's got, when he did the guy, he's headed to Jax every day. That's 100 receipts you can see every day, for a screw.
What's the first way to offer people to sign on those?
And, I mean, here's the thing, it wouldn't be really that much more of a step when they get back with the purse, drop the receipt on the scanner, and then...
But they're not always by a scanner, they're in a truck at a building fixing something.
Yeah, I think there's all the scanners, and the guys don't have to go turn them over. Okay, so we can look into the software.
I can chat and say, "What are the things?"
And updating, and in the meantime, we will ask you specifically if there were...
Oh, that's fine, sure. Yeah, yeah, I have your help.
Okay, okay.
No question, I'm secure.
Move to approve all...
Is there a discussion? No?
Move to approve all bills and submit, excluding bills from Lake Regional Health Systems.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Move to approve Lake Regional Health System bills as presented.
All favor?
Aye.
Next, the treasurer's report. Dr. Hadfield, do you have to give?
Certainly. We'll bring up the financial summary, and I'll be real quick, because I know you've got a lot left to do, and we're a ways in it. So, if you look at your to-date local receipts, you can see they're up almost half million dollars, which is great. Prop C's up, but when you see we're up 493,000, please remember that this month you've got the receipts from the building trades home being sold that's in there, so. The other one, that's kind of a major one, is the year-to-date state receipts, you can see they're up. That's because our formula receipts are up right now, because last year we were facing some of that withholding at this time. So, overall, the financial picture is good.
Looks like everybody's healthy in the district by the medical balance being up a little bit. That's good, right?
Hope it stays that way, for a lot of reasons, we just want healthy people.
Okay.
When I, every time, I, when I look every month, when I look at the financial report for the health, you know, we are getting stock loss money, and, you know, we're getting reimbursement for that insurance that we bought. So, that, you know, that's a place to look at also, and having a board, and we're getting stock loss, and we're getting reimbursement, so we got quite a bit of that, I think, last month. So, it's good, we paid it for it.
Move to approve the October 2021 treasurer's report submitted.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Next, we got new business, we have Lake Career and Technical Center annual report, Mrs. Darnett.
Okay, good evening. I am really excited to just give you a brief glimpse of what's going on at LCTC. I'm about five months into this gig, and just professionally, probably the best five months I've had as an educator. It is a neat building, a lot of really cool things happening, and if you haven't visited us, I just want to extend an invitation to do that. Much of what you guys talked about tonight, and that kind of learning, I was like, yes, that's really what we're doing down at LCTC. So if you haven't visited us, contact me, I'd love to show you what we're doing. Real quick, we do have 11 different programs, and Dr. No, yep, thank you. I went ahead and just highlighted the ones that we have adult students in, so not all of our programs offer, are offered to adult students, but we do have a few, we have 11 adult students this year. Our enrollment is actually up, will you scroll up? We're actually up 96 students this year from last year, and COVID did, it impacted Career Tech Ed, because it is hands-on, and so, I think that was probably why enrollment was down, is we had some students who wanted to be able to get their hands on learning, and they went virtual or for whatever reason. So we are at 719 students this year. You'll see the majority of those are Camden Town students, 667. We do have our three sending schools, so Mac Creek, Climax Springs, and School of the Osage. Just real quick, I think one of the coolest things, and I think this says a lot about LCTC, is two of our sending schools do not have school on Mondays. Their districts just do not attend, and those kids show up every Monday. And I was really worried about that, like, man, am I gonna have to go knock on doors and be like, "You gotta come?" But they're there, and I think that speaks a lot to the kind of learning that's going on down at LCTC. We do have 12 adult students.
I have a question about that, so does School of the Osage put them on a bus down, or they have to drive down here on their own?
See, all of the above. And so, that is kind of new, I don't, that's really up to their administration, whether that continues. Right now, they do bring a bus, and they actually are getting there, like, that's always an issue, is the travel time and what time they get there for us to be able to start, and they're, we start at 8:07, and they're there at 8:10. So, they're pretty quick. So somewhere, we do have drivers, and then we do have a bus that comes as well. I think all Climax and Mac Creek all come on a bus. We have 12 adult students, the majority of these are in our marine tech service program. If you're not familiar with that, it's an adult-only program, Mr. Keeney does a great job with. We have 100% placement. He currently has all nine of those students doing internships at nine different marinas. And our community's just been really awesome to support that, and they, some of them even rotate, and they want to see a bigger marina or smaller marina, and he coordinates that, and has been a really neat program. He's had 100% placement for the last few years. We're pretty small, we have one in collision repair, one in automotive, and then one adult student in computer integration. And then, just a little bit of our student, our program outcomes, we do have 17 opportunities for dual credit. Eight of our 11 programs offer some sort of dual credit. All but one of our programs offers an industry-recognized credential. And really, the only reason that we don't in the one program is there's just, there's not right now, an industry-recognized credential. And then, each of our programs do have opportunities for work-based learning and/or an internship of some sort. So we have a few goals that we've been really laser-focused on at LCTC this year, and work with a great group of people who have really attacked this. And I feel like we've, we're ahead of schedule in meeting some of our goals, so we had kind of some year-two goals, and I think we're gonna be able to scoop those up this year and get to work on some of those. Here are the four big ones that we're really focused on. One is increasing the number of students that earn an IRC. We took a hit because of COVID, we bank them for a year, so you can take your IRCs as a junior or a senior. And so, we kind of get to bank those junior scores, and then, you know, if it doesn't go well that junior year, we test you again as a senior. And so, we didn't have that with the COVID year, so we're really hitting those hard again. Increased participation in CTSOs, and that is our Career Tech student organizations. That is a component that we're judged on, that we're really kind of graded on, as to how valuable our programs are. And we've, our teachers are knocking this one out of the park right now, really have, our enrollments up a ton in that. Strengthen advisory committees and community partnerships, this is a really big focus, and we're going about this in lots of different ways. We just had our Fall Advisory Night, 41 community members attended, we fed them dinner. They are so valuable to us, because they really do guide us and tell us, like, what's industry standard, what do we need to be teaching, what kind of equipment do we need to be purchasing, how are we gonna stay up to date and make sure our kids are leaving us prepared? And they've been amazing, these community members have really been, been great to work with. And then, to, kind of coupled in with that, is then to increase our work-based learning opportunities. And so, we've really kind of changed our approach with our advisory members and kind of been more like, "What can we do for you?" We ask a lot of our community, and we've really tried to say, "How can we help you? What do you need from our students? What do you need from us?" And we've had great, great reception so far. Our teachers have gone out on a business and industry visit already once, and we have three more planned for the year. Instead of collaborating with content, you know, they're kind of on an island, they're the only person that teaches what they teach in our district. And so during PLC time, they will go out and collaborate with business and industry people several times a year, which has been really beneficial as well. This, I'm just, I'm gonna leave you with this, I had the opportunity to stop in. Mrs. Keeney was leading a discussion with some students who are student ambassadors, which is really like the people, if you would come visit, or when we have any kind of event that would go on, they'd give a tour, they'd talk, and really just kind of advocate for us down there. And so, they were sitting in a room, and she had said to them, one of the things that she likes to do is come up with an LCTC top 10, here's why I like it here. And I really just was kind of poking my head in to see how that went, and I had to take a picture, because it was, they, this is the coolest part of my day, they had way more than 10. And the way they speak about LCTC, and the way they speak about the learning that's happening there, you hear the passion, and they love it. So, I'm gonna leave you with that, if you have a chance to look through those, I, that's what it's about, really, for us, is what those kiddos think. So, thank you for your continued support of Career Tech Ed and of LCTC, and again, come visit us. We will have an open house in February, we'll get that date to you, but would love to show you around.
I'm curious, which program does not have an IRC?
Graphic Arts.
And the other thing is, when you go to conferences like this, I think it was the same district, I'm thinking it's Blue Springs, that had the food truck there, which is, was, you know, really a neat idea.
Yep.
They also had, like, a listing of things, and pharmacy tech was one of their programs.
So one of the issues with some of that that we run into is that you have to be 18 to be able to earn that IRC, and some of those things, like, you can't, like, lobotomy with needles, you have to be 18. So we, that's actually, we've had some of those things on the discussion board there, but there are some, there's some things that hinder that moving forward. In general, a sign of our times, health science across the country, enrollment is down slightly, which, during the middle of pandemic, so it kind of makes sense that people are shying away slightly from that.
So you're saying that pharmacy tech program, they'd have to be 18?
Yeah, and I, that's, I think there's, there is a component in there, then, and I believe that is why they have not offered that. We do, what we have is we have a unit of pharmacy tech, and so we've been really fortunate, because we have some equipment that they have learned, that they use in health science, to be able to kind of know what that looks like. But I believe the IRC for that has to be 18.
Because, you know, more grocery stores now, Target has pharmacy, I mean, it's just opportunities, it seems like, you know, for a job.
Had really cool conversations with...
Maybe you have a particular pamphlet on that, I just thought, oh, pharmacy as well, there's pharmacy jobs everywhere.
Yeah, and I think it's important for you guys to know that, like, we are having conversations with all of our program instructors. They're, they're all very forward thinkers, they're all very much on top of their industry and where it's headed. And we're, we're having conversations right now about next year and what needs, what that needs to look like. Are we offering the right courses? Are we trending the way that we want to trend? Had really great conversations with the staff, and they're just, I'm really proud to work with such forward thinkers.
In the graphic arts, do you, even though there isn't technically a disreverent certification, if a student were to receive a, basically, a certificate of completion of your program, and get hired because of that?
No, that wouldn't mean anything, but what does mean something probably is when Mr. Poe is in contact with, and this happens, he's got a lot of them actually, with the different entities in our community that hire that type. Choked you up with that one, huh? When he says, "Hey, I've got this kiddo who's really, really good," and he is respected enough among that industry that when he says, "Hey, I got this kiddo," this is a good one. We've had a student that's intern. Our graphic art students just shot a wedding, like, they just photographed a wedding. We had three students who served as the videographers for the Missouri Treasurers Association State Conference down here. And, I mean, they're doing all kinds of amazing things. So they're walking away with what I would call some work-based learning things that probably are more valuable than a certificate I could give them.
Right.
Well, I'd like to take a tour and see, and see more of you guys.
Yeah.
Do you work with the agriculture department, or is that separate?
No, that's us. Yeah, that's us. They're just, they're not in our building, obviously, but, yeah, no. We claim here. Yeah.
I'm just curious.
We claim them.
Yeah, we do.
Do you think the culinary arts, they're not be ramping up for the foundation dinner soon?
They have, ramping up, they've been hitting it hard. They just hosted Missouri Retired Teachers, a five-course meal. Find a retired teacher and talk to them about that, it was amazing. And then, they are gonna help out with the foundation, but they have, they've, we have a new instructor who's done great, he's hit the ground running, we've already hosted several events. And I've gained five pounds since working there, because they always introduce us as, "Awesome," but they've done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A great job goes to her too, I mean, five months on, and she's on it.
I'm literally everyone learning every day.
I think, Krieger knows there's a lot of opportunity there. When I say that you have a tech school on campus, everyone was like, "Oh, that's really exciting." So I, I just don't know how else to speak to it.
Yeah, it's pretty awesome.
Surely for our strategic plan, that we can figure out a way of giving some kind of creditation from those guys in the graphic arts. That's, yeah, that's kind of where I was headed with that, is just because the industry doesn't technically have one now, let's make one.
Well, I think...
Let's be the one that creates...
Well, our state did that, it's called the Career Tech Ed Certificate, and so they, there are some other things that they do walk away with. So it's a little bit different, and I won't bore you with it all, but an IRC is a little bit different than just a credential. And so, we, they do leave with credentials, so I probably should have clarified that. It's not that they don't leave without, they have credentials. There is not industry-recognized.
Even better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I understand, they're, you know, like, there's a, Mercury's a certification for marine tanks. There's not a, you know, Adobe Acrobat certification that is recognized throughout the industry for Photoshop or...
There are, there is an Adobe certificate, but what he's doing is, is kind of giving them a little bit of a taste of a lot of things, so they're not at the skill level that that certification would require, probably. So, when you, if you've never been in there, it's hard to describe, but they, they leave with lots of multimedia skills, not just Adobe.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And annual report of federal and state programs.
Dr. Dill?
So, you got, I sent the report to you and kind of talked a little bit about it in my board report. The very first part, now, and I haven't started on here, but this is really a recap of what we did last year. So this would have been, you know, Mrs. Jenkins' last year with this, the project pass would have been Mrs. Comer's last year with this. So, the very first page kind of says it all, and this is really kind of taking a look at what allocation we have and where did we spend it. So you can kind of see the, the object line that we spent it under. And as you can see, we could not have the LCTC great programs that we have if we didn't have a lot of this funding. So, the state and federal dollars that we received for LCTC were $572,542. We had to have a local match. For some of those programs, there's an 80/20, they'll give us 80%, we have to match 20. Some of it's 50/50, it kind of depends on what you're purchasing and what program you're looking at. So, for the district, we had to match $87,650 to get the $572,000. But I will, I want to kind of just give you a little, if you're, if you're kind of a little woozy when you walk into a hospital, be careful in those medical rooms down there, because every once in a while, when they're down there starting IV or something on this mannequin-looking person, I mean, I get woozy, I'm like, "Ooh, it's there," you know? So, I mean, it's tremendous work experience that they're getting right, just right over there, you know? So, we are able to have the, I feel like this, there's probably better, but I feel like state-of-the-art stuff. You know, like, we were talking today in the finance committee with Mr. Dickman about, you know, we've got a project going on right now, where our collision, or what, one of our automotive departments can use, work with the kids, and they can bring vehicles back from, you know, being wrecked or whatever, and we're using them on campus. So it's saving us a lot of money, they're getting really good experience with up-to-date vehicles, which is, which is great. I mean, it's a win-win. So, that's about the LCTC part, and the rest of those on that page too. The past After-School Services cohort night, that was the last year for the... And the rest of those on that page too, the past after-school services cohort nine, that was the last year for the grant. That's why when we talked about SRT two earlier on in the year, we decided to dedicate $400,000 to, of SRT two money to take care of those four schools that ran that SRT, earned that cohort nine grant. We will be writing for that new grant in the spring. And this is not something unusual. When I first came, the very first year after I got here, we had to lapse a year for a grant, and so we were able to use some title money for that. We had some carryover at that time. So, so we're blessed to have SRT money on board for that. And then Title I, ESSA, which is Every Student Succeeds Act. I know we throw a lot of acronyms at you all. And then, so we get $1.1 million for that. Title I Delinquent, we provide the education for students at the Juvenile Justice Center downtown, or not downtown, but on the way out of town. And what that, what you're seeing in that $12,453, what that provides is we purchased a program called Odysseyware. So because we get kids not just from Camden, we get kids from Lamar, I was telling the group earlier, we get kids from Lamar, we get kids from Warsaw, we get kids from Springfield, because there are very few juvenile justice centers across the state and the beds are full. And so they literally, some days are calling all around to find a place for a kid to go to. So we get used a lot, which is great, because we're able to help, you know, support those kiddos and get them back to their parents. But, so the biggest portion of that money is going to be used to buy that Odysseyware. The reason why we use that virtual curriculum is Lamar is going to have a different curriculum than Springfield's going to have. And Springfield's going to have a different curriculum than Excrete's going to have. And so in order to make sure those kiddos aren't losing ground, we will put them on, we get their records, just like if we, if a Dogwood receives a new student from another school, we get their records. If they're a student with an IEP, we make sure that we provide their services while they're here. And so what we do is we look at their classes that they have, and then Mr. Walker will go in and assign similar classes. Then we send that record back to the school district when they get back. And especially important if it's, you know, they're a 14, 15-year-old kiddo in high school, they're not losing credits. So that's an important part of that. Title II, we talked about earlier with professional development, and Title II-A is really targeted at teachers and administrators. Title III are English language learners, and we did have a few immigrant students last year. We don't have those kiddos this year. We're back to just the language learners, which they're both the same, one in the same many times. And then Title V-B is what they call a rural schools grant. And so those dollars are typically used for things like, how can we support all kids? And so that's where we purchase our eliminate, our NWA, and our iReady systems from, so that we can gather data from kiddos, as you said earlier. So we know, and we're going to talk about in a little bit, we know where to start with them. We know their gaps. So it's kind of that individualized piece that you all talked about earlier. We can help them where they're at. So that's kind of where, what it's about, and like I said, I put all the specifics in each of the pages for each of the grants. So any questions for me on that? Just to recap.
Is our food and nutrition in there?
No, food and nutrition will be during Ms. Evans' report. I don't remember what month it is.
So it's not a year? Okay, that is federal.
Yeah, it is, it has federal dollars, which is just a different way they receive them.
Okay. Are there other programs like that besides food and nutrition?
Well, we get federal money for junior ROTC.
Yep.
You know, the-
It's a different thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or the vaccine base, food and nutrition.
It, it depends. Right now it's pretty sizable because of some, some, you know, well, I mean-
Everybody's eating, you know, free.
Yeah. Okay, just as far as that's not in this report.
Yeah, no, not in this.
This is more academic-based.
Yeah.
Got it. Anyone have any, did you get, any discussion or questions? No motion?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. But you're in here when you're getting them.
Stay tuned.
Hey, your assessment update.
Okay, so just to kind of recap a little bit, we give iReady, this year we're going to be giving iReady required is three times, beginning, middle, and end. Same for NWA. So we can see where they're coming to us at, and that's what the data, we're going to look at here in a little bit. Where they're coming to us at, where we're at in the middle of the year. So the kiddos will be taking a test the next, in December, so we know, okay, that's what we're doing, working. And we're also doing mini-checks along the way, and then do we need to change up and do something different? And then you'll see at the end of the year data. So these two tasks that we use are formative in nature, so we can make decisions. They're nationally normed, they're aligned to the Missouri learning standards, they're adaptive. So let's say Courtney is, sorry, Courtney, is struggling a little bit on his test, and you guys are just flying right through. Well, it's going to take Courtney back down where he was successful and get a really good read. That's why it's adaptive. And that's how we can individualize, like you all were talking about earlier. For those kiddos like Miley, you know, those kids, it's harder to make growth when you're on iReady and you're one of those kids that really get it, because you just have, it's, it just pushes them so high. And so that's where it's hard to make growth if you're one of those kiddos. And it's prescriptive in nature, because the reports that we receive are, they say, well, you know, Ryan didn't do well on double-digit addition or whatever. So it gets very prescriptive down to where we need to start Ryan and his studies. And then everybody else, it's going to be different because that's what makes it individualized for the classroom teacher. Then if we need to, two or three of you have the same skill gaps, we can pull together and go, okay, let's grab the buttons and let's do this. Let's get back to the concrete stuff and then work back to the abstract. Remember, this is diagnostic work. This is the kiddos coming in the first few weeks of school, where they came to us. So these numbers might look a little bit low, but this is where they're coming in at. And what I want you to look at is when we get to the middle of the year, let's see how many are on above grade level and then how many are at the end. When we pull the reports for iReady, we always use the end-of-the-year filter, because we want to know where they need to be at the end. So if we're not making adequate progress, we know we need to kind of change up things. So you'll see the K4 meeting at the beginning of the year. Those are the percentage of kids that are on or above grade level. And the same will, you'll see on my slide two for K4 math.
Can I ask you to say, on grade level, on grade level after five days of school or on grade level at the end of the year?
Good question. So like, let's take third grade. So 20% of the third graders in K4 ELA, they are on or above grade level, are ready for third-grade curriculum. So one of the things that we looked at a few years ago when I first got here, which has been seven years, I can't believe it, is we had some middle school kiddos before we got the system really up and running. We had some middle school kiddos that were on kindergarten reading level and third-grade reading level. And so when you're trying to teach seventh-grade math or reading or whatever, it's hard to fill in all those gaps, especially if you're teaching at the middle school level and you weren't taught how to teach reading at the elementary level, like phonics and things like that. So yes, that Nancy is looking, because we use the end-of-the-year gauge. So at the end of third grade, all kids should, we should, hopefully, we're going to get as many kids over there as we can, but our personal goal is always 100%. But right now, beginning of the year, first couple of weeks of school, we had 20% that were already on there. So they're the Miley's, you know, so what are we going to do with those kiddos to make sure they've already got some of this curriculum? What curriculum do they have? And then do they have some gaps that we need to backfill a little bit? And if not, we can, what can we do to extend that and keep them growing? And the same with math. So, so that's kind of where we're starting. We're going to be testing again here pretty quick, so we'll be at the middle of the year in January. We'll be able to come back and say, okay, here's where we're at now. These are the things that we did. I can tell you that in reading, we're always focusing on the foundational reading, so the phonics, the linguistic awareness. What are those, you know, what things do kiddos need? And then vocabulary and comprehension. Those are always the babies that we're always focused on for reading. And then for math, the things that we're looking at are those numbers and operations, and then also relationships and algebraic thinking. We talked a little bit about that in finance. Even kindergarteners are doing a little bit of algebra. They just don't know it.
How long have we been doing Eureka now?
Eureka? So I, the second year I came is the year that we brought in Eureka and trained everybody. So from that point forward, which would be six years, we've been using it at every grade level. And, and with, with, with materials too. That was the other piece. We had reached out and we were printing stuff off. With that training, they also got all the materials they needed. So everybody had the same tools and the same training. So I would say six years. And that was one of the things that when Dr. Hatfield went up to, we knew they were very impressed with that, that we were seeing some good results, because we had a system, we had, we had a curricular resource that we were using and everybody was using it, you know, across the board.
And you say we're having good results, we mean?
So we are seeing growth, is what they were looking at.
When was that?
What were you?
Well, we were a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, we went up, we're talking with their professors of math education. Because we, we wanted to get, we needed to get better in math. And, and they go, well, you're, we're seeing, looking at your data and we know what you're using and we're starting to see you stair-step some things. Where we're not seeing it is at, at some, you know, your secondary level. And so that's what they said. You, our recommendation to you is you need to get a resource, you need to let your teachers mess around with it and learn it and develop some skills with it and then stick with it for a little while and get good. Because they say that's what they see a lot of times, is people will see the bright shiny thing flashing across and they'll, they'll run to that and then they'll see another one over here and, and you can't get good at a system, you know?
And they told us five to seven years, and that's when we started our, we were in, actually in the third year of our secondary resources in math now, but our first year we didn't have a full school year and our second year was, it was hybrid. Some people hear something like that, but we've, we've seen consistent growth in all three years on that as well. So what they're saying about a consistent tool and using the same tool and having the teachers get familiar with it and students get consistent with it, we are, our data shows us that we are seeing growth. And, and our state data is going to show you that too. We can't show you that yet because it's still under embargo, but we're really, really pleased with, I think, not, not so much just a resource, but being consistent. People finding comfort in consistency, not, not switching resources on the teachers. And that, I think they really appreciate that. And if you can take a look at these, these are our NWA scores for ELA. And what we're noticing on those, Dr. Dill did a little magic for me today with the, with our, with just our personal data, but we're, we've, we've come in almost above, almost in every grade level where we started last year for that first diagnostic, but what's really incredible is that in three of our, two of our grade levels, three of our grades, we're, we're almost to where we were at the end of the year last year. Just having, being in seat and being here and having our kids in front of the teachers, it's been absolutely instrumental. And then when you look at our math, it's, it's much higher than it was. And we still have a lot.
That's now, okay.
Yeah. And we still have a, you know, we still have a lot of work to do, but we're really happy with where we are right now and how, how much higher our kids came in this year than they did last year, just on that first diagnostic. So we'll continue to work on, like Dr. Dill said, numbers and operations and relational algebraic thinking. But, I mean, it's, it's going well and, and not, you know, not getting sent home and having to teach them virtually, but actually having the teachers work through this. And then also Callie suggested surveying the math teachers and taking their suggestions, and we, we did that. And that's been positive. It's been, really was a very good suggestion and it's actually showing we're, we're continuing to grow for that too, so. And they appreciated the opportunity to give us some feedback too, so that went really well. And then as far as math data goes, again, it's embargoed and-
They said December 1st.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Yeah.
So we should be able to report some things to you. We should be able to get it. I, I think we can get it filtered out for you easily in January. I don't know that we can do it easily by December. Just don't think we can get it all sorted out.
You can get raw data.
And December 1st is still, you know, you talk to one person and they're still like, oh yeah, we're going to get this, some person you're talking to. And they're like, oh, we're shooting for December 1st, you know, we'll see how it goes, so.
And when was that testing done?
In the spring of 2021.
And then the NWA got this fall, this is the first time going.
Yeah, we did that in the fall too, and then we'll do the middle, just like NWA will do. So that's where we started the year. We're excited to, to come back around again. And so in January, you'll, I think we'll be have, I think we'll have all of our testing done. It depends on snow days and everything else, but, so you'll get to see the map and EOC data. It should be, you know, ready to roll and, and maybe by then we'll have our APR data also, so you can kind of see as a district where our picture are looking and numbers. And then also we may be able to have another update for you, a mid-year update for iReady and NWA. Yeah, that's the goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Next, discuss organizational chart. I added this. I would like to work, start considering having a CFO position for next year. And there was disrespect to Dr. Dill or Dr. Hatfield. I just, I just talked to other school districts and a lot of them are, sometimes are, receipts are revenue. Having more of a fine, like a personal background. So it's not in here. This is our current, current organizational chart, excuse me. So just to start kind of brainstorming on that, this is mainly for discussion and no, you know, no action necessarily taken. But as we have some different positions that we'll be filling this year and looking at next year and also some of the processes that we've talked about today even, it's mainly something to consider. Does anybody have, and they want to talk about or read a table on that? I know we can keep moving.
I think it's, I think it's definitely worth researching.
I think too, as we get further into our secretions, that's what we have.
And yeah, you know, honestly, that, that may be certainly good, but here she feels very strongly about, we had experience with it. So that, you know, that, that's interesting.
Yeah, my kind of thoughts on it was that Dr. Dill's position already is, what, 90% finance probably, I mean?
There's a few other things.
I mean, yeah, I mean, you, we have, we have, you know, you're, you're stuck in there. But I mean, it's a big portion of his finance and stuff. If we did go that route though, I would like to make sure that they, it's just not a CFO, that they, they have a focus in educational. I mean, because I don't think CFOs come out with, you know, degrees in educational. Finance, you know, because I don't find educational finances, I mean, there's rules that we follow and stuff, so.
Right.
But yeah, I definitely think it's something to look into.
There's a lot of people that have experience with municipality, state contracts, governmental entities, as far as compliance to. There's a lot of compliance. Do you not remember what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's something that we, we make that shift.
We're trying to move on.
You know, maybe that's, is area of expertise that we, we need to acquire is, I mean, it's a wonderful, wonderful education. But yeah, like I said, it's, I, I, I think it was considering. I obviously haven't, I've studied to research it, but I have researched it a ton. That's one of the things that I am curious to see if I can point out is that, you know, like, there's law firms, but that's all they do is educational. So you know, I don't know if that's a focus in the CFO field or in the financial world, if, you know, if there are people that specialize in education or specialize in career the other, but.
All right, we'll do, we'll discuss that more later. We'll let some things play out first. Okay, next, unfinished business, discussion of COMC partnership. You have represented from CMC or TNE?
There is not. Basically what you have with this-
There is not. Um, basically what you have with this M O U is, uh, I know this has been presented a couple of times to you for your consideration. And I know there's been some input and some feedback back and forth. And I know Mr. Bud's last board meeting had an item in there. You can see that Dr. McNamara has put that in there. And so we're just bringing it back for your consideration.
I honestly have to take the hit on this one. I think I've, I've had issues with, with the M O U verage. Um, I actually have been very happy with the current draft with the, with the verage changes. I think that, uh, addresses my concerns particularly with reliability and process. So I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I appreciate the, uh, the effort going through it. We work things a little more clearer for us and it's, uh, I didn't have issues either.
I appreciate everybody who took the time to, to make a little more detail.
Well.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I just said, I appreciate everybody who, you know, made an effort to make it a little more detailed for us. Specific, so it's good to meet.
I know Dr. McNamara were, you know, heard, heard your concerns and really wanted to take care of them, so.
Uh, have, have these been presented to C, to both organizations?
Uh, I, yes, Vicki has been passing them back and forth now. With that slight change, I, um, I'm not positive. And I'm not positive if they pass it by, they're legal. And this may be Dr. McNamara. So I, I think we're in a good spot with them. Yes, sir. Yeah.
Move to approve the M O U with C O M C is presented?
Sorry. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please, the second one is almost the same thing with Compass Health.
Yeah, it's, it contains the same verage corrections that I was concerned about earlier.
Move to approve the M O U with Compass Health is presented?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, long one. Uh, resolution authorizing the offering for sale of an issue of general obligation refunding bonds. Missouri Direct Deposit Program Series 2021 of Camden County, reorganizing that, reorganizing School District Number R3 of Camden County, Missouri. So this has to do with bonds that are, that we can, that are honestly up, that we can refinance right now. Because from a financial perspective, potentially turning in a way that is really beneficial.
Yes.
To summarize it, do you want to give a little bit more?
Um, so as you might recall, uh, what we're asking for the board's consideration is that, uh, you, you have an opportunity, uh, for a tax exempt refunding on your 2014 and 2017 series of bonds. Uh, this refunding would allow you, uh, projected to keep your debt service levy at 31 cents for at least a decade. Um, basically all held constant right now, right? With, you know, variables and assessed valuation trends and that sort of thing. Uh, so it gives you some time to decide then. You have another, uh, and that would, that's the, that third item on there where you see the taxable refunding. That was a different series of, uh, bonds that if you wanted to refinance them now, they would be taxable. And so you wouldn't save as much money. It'd cost you a little bit more. Not recommending that, but again, it's just for your information. But most definitely, as you saw at the board's, uh, retreat, that those, that you have a prime opportunity, um, to, to save some, some dollars down the road, uh, to go ahead and refinance that 2014, 2017 series.
Can I ask you one thing?
Sure.
What is the current balance on the 2014? Is it on here? Cause I kind of remember what he had said and I felt like it was smaller.
It, it is.
Do you, what did he say? Sixty?
Um.
Or 690?
You got, you've got a, uh, yeah, you've got a, you've got a six, 690.
Yes. Okay, it was 690.
Yeah.
And then that is pacing to treat, to be paid off in the next two years? What was it?
Uh, I'd have to look again at what the, the payment schedule would be and I don't think I have.
It's in this report.
Yeah, I don't think I have that off the top of my head.
I think that's a, I think, I think. So is this is the offering to, this, this, is this us approving them to go out and offer it? And not, and it's not a final approval for us to do it? Or is this us giving approval to refinance?
You have a resolution there, that first line item there, as Joe described at your retreat.
Right.
This, you would be giving them parameters to start the process, to go ahead and move forward with the refunding. Um, and then the, uh, the official would be, uh, that you, the board at that time would sign a purchase agreement, uh, at the December board meeting to finalize it. But here, you're saying here are the board's parameters to go sell those bonds and you work under those parameters.
So is the 690 principal and interest currently?
Yes.
Then how much extra in, interest would we be layering on in the long term? I'm just talking about 14, cause I just feel like it's smaller and, so I'm focusing on that one first.
Dollar interest as during the life of the bond?
Yeah. Cause it, and I think that's on here. So when you go to look at the re, because the 690 is principal interest, like that's what we owe total, right? So that's the next, potentially in the year or two, wherever it would be paid off. But then for us to refinance it and then the, the extra 14, 15 years, we would be adding how much more over the life of that refinance. I do call it a refunding, I just call it a finance, but same thing. I guess my point is it's almost, from where I'm looking at it, it's almost like 25% of what we owe already on top of what we owe. And I feel like for such a small bond, I'd like to pay down some debt instead of passing it forward. At least things that we potentially could pay off. I understand the 2017 one is quite a bit larger, so that one might make more sense. I would, I, I think we just owe it to our community to start paying down some debt. And that's just where I am. That's just personal.
So in the auditor's report, they said that our fund balance was 18 million. But when we talk about our fund balance, it's, you, you always mention like 35, 38, 38 million?
Uh, percent.
38%, sorry. Um, is that what that is? The 18 million is a 38%? Okay. And it's suggested to have 25, 25%?
That's the board's floor.
Okay.
Um, now, one thing to remember is Lindsay, uh, as she spoke to you a little bit, she said, you know, kind of their standard is between four and six months' worth of, um, reserve for your, uh, and again, remember that's a June 30th balance. So we are most time getting a lot of our receipts until December, January, February. So, um, here you would like to see that healthy balance at, at the end. So, and you know, you're sitting right there at the five month mark, right in between the six and the four. So, um, there's been weird times where, and I've told this story before, that, that, you know, the county, when they were switching over some software, we didn't get our receipts, uh, as early as we did, uh, as we typically do. And, you know, we, we, we called up there and said, hey, you know, we're going to make payroll this month. But if we have a hiccup next month, you know, come December, January, if you're, you're not getting paid, you gotta, you gotta really think about that with our local wealth, um, to do that. If, if the board would, you know, with the 14, if you'd like to do something else, that'd be fine. I'd have to go back and work with Joe. Uh, and we'd have to draft a new resolution. So we'd be, you know, putting that out there probably another month. Which, you know, if that's what the board wanted to do, just a little worried about, you know, as he said, those interest rates and what they may, what they may do in between time.
Well, I just, it's 690, if I'm reading this right, it's over the life of it, you're adding 148,000. I mean, 148,000 in total of 690, I just don't think that's a good, I, I think the extending it out 14, 15 for that amount. I, I just don't agree with it, if the board, you know, if everyone else is fine with it. It's just, um, it's something that I was thinking about and I'd like to pay some debt instead of continuously picking it down and layering on more expense. Cause initially, we're giving ourselves more expense along them. And that's just part of refinancing your house.
Do you know off the top of your head when the two four, 2014 portion is set to be paid out?
I'd have to go see what our, our, um, payment schedule is and I don't know that off the top of my head.
Did he present that to us?
I think you're right.
And I couldn't find it. And I don't know if that was shared with us or not. It, it just had a slide. I don't think he shared it with us. It was, that was another one. Well, how does everyone else feel about what I just brought up? I haven't really, I had to.
It'd be nice if we could pay down the 690, but where, where do we come up with that?
Well, right now we're paying.
How much time do we have to, to finish that?
I guess it depends on how we're trending right now in our payments. Is it a $19,000 a year? What was that? And here's another thing, when you look at refinancing, and I'm sure everyone knows this, and I don't want to act like I'm some mom over here, but it's all the interest is front loaded. So every time you refund or refinance, you're, you're just adding more money to the front. You're just front loading your loan. I just think if, I think if we.
It's not necessary to do that for that one. Not for 690,000.
Do you know why he put that 690,000 on there? Or was it?
Um.
I thought he said it was going to be very minimal, but.
Cause it's eligible to be refunded.
I think it was going to be minimal for his fee to add it. Cause the fee we're going to be charged is what we estimated 43,000. And I think just adding the 14, doing the 17, I think that was small.
You're right.
If, if I remember correctly. I mean, that's just where I'm at.
It sounded like we're going to have to do the 2017.
Yeah, yeah. That was a big, that was a bigger one that.
Uh, it looks like the 14 is scheduled to be paid off in 2034.
That's if you refinance.
No, that's current, what the current schedule is.
For 2014? So then we're not carrying a lot then? But it says if we refinance, it would go out to 37?
I can't remember, only being a few.
I have to think so, right? I think you're looking at the refund.
No, I'm looking at our payment schedule now.
And so how much is that costing us even?
Well, it depends. Some years you pay and some years you don't.
So we couldn't pay it off in two years anyways, right? We, we have to go out to that amount of time.
Uh.
I mean, we.
I mean, you can always pay.
We could pay it off early, but.
We don't have to right now.
But, you know, probably 300 and something thousand a year out of our current working budget may be a challenge.
Yeah.
Well, to extend it for three years for 100 and, 148,000 doesn't really make sense. You know, if you break it down that way.
I mean, it's basically, that is costing us 50 grand a year.
I'm sure it was coming up soon.
Maybe we just come up with some, figure out what our options are for the 2014 for now and approve the 2017, it sounds like.
Well, that makes it even more not make sense though.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to send it back to the staple and then close it. To have them work out a little bit of trouble.
Just to have it.
Make, make, approve his, his parameters.
Are we gonna, are we gonna try for a second meeting this month?
Yeah, we can.
I think we need to for superintendent search.
Yeah. So we can, we could try to add it. If we could, if you could go back to him, we can address it.
Sure.
That way we don't have to put it out a whole nother month.
Yeah, and if he could give us the two options on there, you know, show us the difference on it too.
Yeah, just have him work one out, not including the 2014 and see it.
And if, and if you could show it, we're currently trending.
And I mean, you know.
It's just not on here.
Um, you know, and you could, coming up with, with maybe pulling, see if, if we can manage an extra hundred thousand dollars a year, which is a pretty small percentage of what we're working with and get it paid off the second year. So it's still going to save our interest over the life of this thing if it doesn't mature until 34.
Yeah, we can, we're going to use more information. More information and then a separate quote of just doing separating them out. Do you guys need a separate one of 14 as well or just separating 17 out?
I think a better understanding of the current one and then separating 17 out.
Okay.
We don't want to prolong this too much. We'll lose all.
Uh, yeah.
All our gains in the, uh, that's just it. I mean, it's, 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 it's pretty volatile right there.
To get a good interest rate.
That is already, that is already, I gotta start working with it. It's coming up pretty quick, so that may be good or it may be bad.
Okay. Well, then we'll get some more information and try and move quickly, even if we have to just come in for 30 minutes and say yes.
Sure. Yep. I've got an email put together for them right now. I'll get it to them.
And do we need a motion there?
Uh, no, I just, yeah, I, you could, you could make a motion to table it or just move on, either way.
What is table it? Would you motion table it?
Make a motion to table the refinancing of the, the bond resolution.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next for the M S B A membership. Uh, we've received a lot of emails over the last month concerning the membership, whether in favor or against. Um, and the recent ones that we got had a lot of information that I thought we should address publicly. And it was what, what, what services M S B A provides and what we have and what it costs us. But I think a speaker earlier, when I mentioned, um, that it doesn't cost us anything due to the Medicaid reimbursements. Well, there is a fee for that with a claim reimbursement. Um, I think our last year, or I don't know that time period, but it was about $20,000 for $200,000 worth of reimbursement. So just kind of understanding, so the whole public understands what services they provide. And also understanding what other agencies do or, you know, can provide that. And then if we need to do anything in-house, um, again, the speaker said that, that she had done the in-house reimbursements at some time. So understanding what that work looks like logistically and, um, so, okay. So to start out first, as far as policy review. So M S B A provides policy review, but there are other agencies that provide policy review, basically. I mean, we have Mo Air, we have Ed Council, even has a separate honor for it, and then attorneys do it as well. So I don't know if we need any more discretion on that. It's mainly informative for the public, I think. Um, okay. And then.
What was the first one? Mo Air?
Yeah, Mayor.
Oh, Mayor.
I just said Mo Air, I don't know why.
Okay.
Like it's like M S B A or Mo.
Those are associations.
Yeah.
Group, group, which is, yeah.
Which is basically, it's basically.
Air.
Okay. They basically provide the same services. So that's who I did my board training through. And, um, Ed Council was actually the attorneys that came and spoke, so they utilized them as well. Um, they also write policy, just like, um, M S B A. And then, um, they also write scholarships to their students. Um, and, and I think that they are part of a consortium too that offers the Medicaid processing as well. So, I mean, just to make, and just to, you know, make it clear that.
Yeah, I, I.
M S B A isn't just the only game in town, so, um, it's important, I think. In fact, I think it'd be great to have maybe representative from Mayor come and present kind of what they offer. In, in fact, I think it'd be great to have maybe representative from Mayor come and present kind of what they offer too. Um, just.
I think due diligence, I think that'd be, I'd love to hear what they.
Because there were, um, a lot of emails, pro and con, and I think it's, um, just responsible of us to just, like you said, do our due diligence and, and give everybody a fair chance to hear what else is out there. Um, because there were good reasons for, on both sides, so.
Well, I, one interesting point of clarification that I feel necessary to point out. We did, we, we received a lot of emails from people on both sides. Um, with rare exception, we received one email from a lot of different people. From the side that wants us to maintain membership.
Saving them.
Um, and, uh, I wanna just go on public record as saying that I love that people want to share with us what their beliefs are concerning our district. I'm really disappointed, but they didn't care enough to do more than copy and paste. And I hope you're watching. I wanna hear what you think, not what somebody that writes a form letter thinks. I'm a little offended at the few that did add their personal thoughts. Because basically, the only argument they could come up with is we're all too stupid to be doing what we're doing. And without MSBA teaching us, we would all crash and burn and it'd be ugly.
I think lunatics is the word. Oh, lunatics.
Oh, no, yeah, no, it's, it's, uh, yeah. Lunatics are, are the ones that are making decisions for us. So thank, thank goodness NIBA is there to teach us.
Well, I, I would like to clarify that I, I've been watching some MSBA trainings or boards and then looking at all the policy, and maybe Mayor does the same thing. But we have a lot of policies that try to silence our community and silence our board. Like it tries to hogtie the board. And, but I'm not okay with that, and I'm okay just because I'm on the board now, but I'm okay for the future. I'm okay with other school districts across, you know, for, for everybody to have. And I don't know if it's just ours, because I look at other districts and they have different policies. So it's almost like, who, who over there behind the curtain is making all these policies and then giving this to us? Like this agenda, like earlier, with all, I mean, just butchered all these agendas, red line, red line. We don't know where this is coming from and what purpose, especially the ones that aren't for the poor reasons. So that could be a problem for all of the policy writers, I don't know. And so I really want us to, as we go through policy, and, you know, we need to obviously get better at it, but understanding what is, we have to do, what we need to do, what truly protects, you know, the teachers and staff and students. And, but also not stop silencing the elected officials. We were elected by the people in our community. And so I'm watching trainings where it's all about governance and where we give unelected officials all the power. So just, here, just, let's just give you an agenda. You guys have no discussion ahead of time. Here, your agenda, here you go. That's what you get, and you pass it. And so I think that is work form, and I think elected officials and school boards have allowed that to happen. And I just wanna make sure that beyond the letter to the governor, or whoever's AG, and beyond MSBA leaving MSBA, we have another issue with just the way policies are written, the way that they're used to weaponize against the community, against the elected officials, and that is, that's my concern. And I, I've heard that Mayor has more, um, straightforward policy. I haven't seen it. Um, I also talked to many presidents of school boards, and it's actually, you know, one of the benefits of being MSBA, I have to speak to a lot of president of boards, just a couple days. And they are, it's not all of the MSBA policies. So we, we can take them under advisement, but we don't need to just feel like, ooh, thanks, that looks good, let's go. So just be cautious of that. So, um, that, that, that is my concern. So when we're getting these emails, and like you said, they're just like, who's gonna be the Medicaid? I mean, first of all, who, wouldn't education and policy review like start doing Medicaid? Well. It's a school thing, but it's fine. It's great, there's a service provided.
I, I know, I'm, I'm kinda harping on the, the form letter. I mean, like, really, do better.
Yeah.
But there were some oddly specific numbers that weren't accurate, by the way. Uh, I don't, we got told however many times, but the service they provide is saving us two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's not accurate.
It's just claims reimbursement.
Lots of people claimed that they were told or heard or whatever that lots of the board members uh, were planning on discontinuing the membership. I don't know if that's necessarily true. I, MSBA, in my opinion, is somewhere in between a beneficial partnership and a necessary evil. There, there's somewhere in between that. There are, there is another organization in the state of Missouri that offers the same services for a lot less money. A lot. K through twelve membership to the Missouri Association of Rural Educators is five hundred dollars a year, as opposed to ninety-seven hundred. I am curious if MSBA intends to lower their annual membership fees now that they're not paying close to, what was it, fifty thousand dollars a year? Thirty-four. So, you know, are they gonna pass that savings arm to the districts? Um, and I'm curious to see if we can have a representative from Mayor come in, uh, kinda get a, you know, get a feel for him. If absolutely nothing else, I am kind of interested in Mayor because they cater to rural areas. And we are rural area. They also, uh, represent their districts at the state and national level. As opposed, and, and MSBA does as well. But the issue is, we are a vote amongst five hundred and some districts, a lot of which are urban districts, which it seems like they may cater to. So I don't know if, if they're the best organization to represent our interests or not.
I do know that several of the school districts are rural both. They're doing both, MSBA and Mayor. The, our schools are both. The school districts are members of both. I even saw some school stating that's, I don't, I'm not quite sure how it covers. So we can get a presentation. I would, regardless, like, um, it, the agricultural program that we have going on, the FFA and, you know, Mr. Kitchen, what's the FFA guy, I don't know, but he runs a lot of boards, just the basic department. Um, but even just to network with the world, with, cause we do have some things that are more aligned with what they're working on and, uh, industries that they support.
Maybe it would be in the best interest of our students and our community to come members of both.
Yeah.
I don't know. I said we're, there, there's, there's a lot, but, uh, I think we can learn from, you know, speaking with, with Mayor.
Sure.
You know, like I said, one way or the other, maybe one or the other, maybe both. But I, I do wanna let everyone know that the, uh, it, to me, the, the, uh, firestorm of emailing us backfired. Because the vast majority had admirable copy and paste skills. Um, there were a couple though that weren't real good at it. Because they didn't take the foreign portion of the letter out. They'd copied the whole thing. So it was blatantly obvious that somebody penned that letter and sent it around. Uh, one of the emails we received actually said, in the script at the top, what the sender forgot to, uh, not include in the letter, uh, you know, if you don't act now, you know, it's gonna be horrible, they're gonna do this, they're gonna do that, send now.
Well, I think the idea that it would hurt students was a little bit.
Well, and like I said, whoever did pen the letter made a couple of mistakes. Um, I also heard from a lot of people that, uh, were under the impression if we discontinued our association, that it's gonna cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in medical billing. And there's no doubt that we're gonna have to raise taxes to cover that. It's also not true. Um, I find it very interesting that the majority of people said that they saw it on the agenda, which is why they're emailing us, even though the agenda wasn't finalized in public yet. So somebody looked, saw a draft agenda as you started this firestorm. We know the source of the emails that were sent within the district. And I'm not going to name any names or point anything out, but it's not real hard to connect the dots. It's that I want to hear from everybody. I want to, I wanna know what every teacher would like us to do. I wanna know what every student would like us to do. I wanna know what every taxpayer would like us to do. But please, if you feel strongly one way or the other, let us know what you think. Not what somebody else thinks.
Well, I agree with you on that, but I also agree that these people sent these emails, I mean, because they believed it. Whether it was their words or it wasn't their words.
No, I, I.
And still, they believed it. That's why they sent her. They wouldn't attach their name and their address to them.
I, I agree, I agree.
So, I mean, I don't think we discredit them any more than I would discredit any other email that was sent to my email address. Whatever. I, I'm all for looking into other organizations too. I don't think that that's a bad idea at all. But I do feel like we have, we are paid up for a year's membership of MSBA. We all voted in June to have a membership in MSBA. We didn't have these arguments in June when we unanimously, unanimously passed for us to be members of MSBA for another year. I just feel like it's physically irresponsible, that it's financially irresponsible to our community to opt out of it, of a membership we've already paid for for a year.
Who's saying that we're gonna opt out of it?
Oh, it's, social media is all over. Like, I got, I got screenshots from, I guarantee you, twenty teachers, maybe more, that sent me screenshots. From local members of the communities post that had school board, some of them had school board members' comments on it.
Right, cause that's not the same thing as.
I can see how a teacher or how a taxpayer in our district took it to think that it was going to be on the agenda and that it was going to, uh, that we were gonna opt out of MSBA when a member of our board put on there, MSBA, bye-bye.
Yeah, well, I put that on there, but it wasn't meaning.
But can you see how they took it, is that?
They took it.
I mean, you, you can't see that?
I mean, the virtual.
You're the president.
But the way that I said it wasn't supposed to be intended that way.
But it was, it was taken that way by several groups of people and several people.
The public agenda, and the only reason why I put it on this time is because of it all the emails.
Well, I think it's a normal progression when you table something, but I'm not, it's gonna come back the next month. You have a competition. Just like we've cabled this bond resolution, it's gonna come back.
Yeah, and the way that I said that wasn't exactly the way it was, and it's taken out of context. And if I don't like something and I want to say that I don't agree with it, I'm gonna say I don't agree with it.
So I'm curious, and again, I, I would like to hear from everybody. If, and that was another one of the, the big arguments in the emails that were positive towards maintaining our association. Is that if it would be fiscally irresponsible to part ways now, even though we've paid our fees through June, would it be fiscally irresponsible to pay ninety-seven hundred dollars a year? When we can get the same services for five hundred dollars a year? I, it, it doesn't need answers. I, I just.
It's that due diligence.
Just curious.
We need to, we need, you know, you suggested letting all the memberships compare and, you know, is it the same policy service, is it the same? I, I'm not gonna say the same training, but will we get the credit, which now MSIP is gonna tell us? We have to have that minimal training. Is it the same? Then that's a wash.
Yeah, and like I said, it's.
It's a comparison issue then, is what you're saying.
I, I, and I think that's probably our best course of action at this point is to legitimately, you know.
Explore.
Yeah, explore options.
And I think a month ago, when we, you know, when this happened with the NSBA, you know, emotions were high. I think people kinda take on a little bit, carried away with it. I think now we're just brought up to the table, we're gonna discuss it, our, you know, our futures. I think it's reasonable to, you know, exercise our options and possibly.
And I said, there's, yeah, and, yeah.
Some emotions got high.
There's, there's people that are very passionate on both sides. Um, I'm, I'm kind of neutral. Like, you know, I, at, like I said earlier, at worst, I, I think they may be a necessary evil. Unless we can get the same benefit. Um, at best, they are a beneficial partnership, cause they do provide all the services.
To listen to the commentary.
You know, how they, you know, I, I don't, honestly, I don't like the fact that out of all the members, I hope you, out of all the districts who are members, uh, you know, basically, our values and our vote is automatically canceled by this, this school in particular. Or in areas that don't necessarily share our value system. You know, so we're, we're not here in this district. And I don't know how much difference that makes, but historically, and it's, it's hard to use what positions they held in the past as what they're gonna do in the future. But, you know, our, our area was very much predominantly against adopting common core. And yet, we were paying an organization to fight against what our area wanted. It's not necessarily to say what that title's gonna be in the future. But that, that's my biggest concern.
All right, well, I, is there a motion? I, I didn't put a motion in here, so I wasn't.
Well, we, I think we'd like to hear from a Mayor representative, if possible, next month. Um, I don't think there's any motion to make a change or anything right now.
Extend the offer. Yeah, yeah, we could follow up with Mayor to see if they can present or give us information.
Would you like me to reach out to them to see if I could arrange that, or how do you wanna handle that?
Sure. Sure, yeah.
Be happy to do so.
Okay, so discussion regarding parent professionals. So, Eric, Kelly and I sat in on the TAC committee and it was a very discussion, we learned a lot. And one of their, they brought up the pairs. And so just kind of understanding where we're at as far as quantity of pairs, what their pay is, it just seemed like we were, in the last few years, we've cut them. We don't have as many as before, is that what the meaning that we were getting? So I just wouldn't have a discussion, because it seems like our teachers need a lot of help. We're getting asked for mental health days, not just from you, from other areas, but. So just kind of understanding what we can do to support, I don't need to get our pairs paid up a little bit better or maybe a lot better.
I know a big concern was would we up to the pay for substitute pay, which was necessary. Now our substitutes make more than our pairs make. So, we need to find some, we need to adjust that in some way to, you know, make sure they're up with our, with our substitute pay as well. So it's something we need to consider going into next year.
Yeah, and I was talking to other districts and the parent, we raised it, I remember raising, but I don't think we raised it. Dr. Mc, she had it, right?
Yeah, she had a conference right now.
Our board report, I mean, it's, we're losing pairs.
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually what I was wondering is, are we down on pairs because we don't have positions? Or we just can't get them?
They're hard to get.
He's a factor.
They're hard to get, pay, pay is a factor. You know, some districts close to us, well, one of them in particular had, had a successful levy campaign and got pretty aggressive with their, you know, para pay. And I, I do think there needs to be a market adjustment to that para pay, you know, not just a standard percentage increase. You know, now I know, you know, when you're looking out and you see the dollars in another district, you know, sometimes maybe you're not thinking, okay, well, we got three dollar a gallon gas and who knows what it's gonna go to, you know, and so we've had that happen before where we've gotten pairs back. But I, I do think, I mean, I agree that, that, that there needs to be a market adjustment on, on their hourly rate.
Well, and it's not as good as being able to put students in smaller groups per teacher. But it helps a lot, and honestly, I think class size, it is one of our bigger issues because of the individualized attention that, you know, Mandy was talking about. Everyone in the room is kind of bouncing around, you know, that's, that's where we need to get to to be more effective. I think adding pairs to classrooms helps with the student-teacher ratio enough, but it's gonna be cheaper than doubling our physical classrooms and doubling our number of teachers as for certified staff. So, I mean, if, if, if that's what is, if smaller class sizes is the goal to get to where we need to be, pairs is a great step towards accomplishing that, so.
They, someone mentioned that they had cut para positions for the last few years, so it's not just that we're not getting them. I don't know.
Have we? Sorry, I'll.
Parent professionals are usually guided by the IEP minutes. So when IEP meetings happen, that, that team will decide if that student would benefit from a para for, for whatever reason to help them academically. So that's typically, when you talk of your special ed pairs, that's, they're driven by IEP decisions from, from the team.
Yeah, I know.
But we have library professors that have some others.
I don't know if they were talking about IEP or half, do you remember?
I don't know.
Yes. And a couple of lists of our trends either. Do we think we can discuss maybe something for the next meeting?
Well, if, if you're up to, I mean, could we, I think this is something we need to get on topic, like right now, I'm, I'm scared I don't lose more people.
Yeah, I mean, it, I, I. We're already.
Think maybe we get a committee, a couple, you know, meet between now and our next meeting and then maybe have some.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we've already determined that we need to do an extra section this month.
I mean, we don't have the stuff, I mean, we don't have any material in front of us, we don't know what districts around us are paying, we don't know.
Getting it together by.
Dr. Mc, Dr. Mc did give us something last, I think this summer she had some good.
And we can, we could update it for you. You know, she already, Vicky may already have it updated, but if not, we can get it updated, I mean, that, that won't be that tough.
Yeah.
And we can have that for you.
If you could, if you really want to, but I just feel like a recommendation.
I mean, we could give you a recommendation on the twenty-third if.
Yeah.
Honestly, your recommendation's probably a lot better than us.
Yeah, I just know that it's, it definitely needs to be higher than substitutes.
Oh, most definitely, and, and you gotta be, you gotta be able to compete.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, I think we can get, get you one.
The learnings, look at your budget. Yeah.
And, yeah, I don't know about our positions, I, I don't know. That's, that's something like, we don't know.
Can we get some information on positions, non-IEP para versus IEP para? Because it seemed like it's kind of getting mixed where it was like helped during lunch, it was helped during recess. Because parent professionals were looked kind of in a group of a lot of different support roles. So I don't know if that's also an issue versus just the IEP para, I don't think, separate and look at that better.
Yeah, right now, you know, I know the spots that we're missing are some of our IEPs, because Dr. Dill's right on it. So IEP needs a drive whether or not you have a para. And, you know, even, even classroom sizes, you know, there was a, we, we had some provisions where when you would add a para, if your class size got so big, well, then you go, well, now you got another body in the room. And, and you got another person, I mean, if you got the right para, that works out great. But if you have somebody that you have to manage for the teacher, that's just more, you know, more management. So, you know, a lot of factors go into that, but I think.
And honestly, if, if that para's sole purpose is to be in that room because there's one IEP student in there, then, you know, the focus is the IEP, the one student.
Yeah.
But the teacher sits in on those meetings, right?
Oh, there's an IEP team that, where you would have a teacher that would sit in. But I, I think really the, from what I was hearing from your discussion is there, we wanna be able to compete for pairs, we wanna be able to attract them, we wanna be able to keep them here. So, and I think that comes down to what the hourly rate is, so we'll get that.
And is, is, and having two different categories, having an IEP para as compared to a general para, an option, because I've known some, some pairs that have an individualistic role with a student. And their day is tough, I mean, really, really tough.
You're talking about a pay differential for, you know, a special ed para?
Right.
As opposed to a, you know, we don't have a lot of, like, regu, regular pairs, whether it be lunch or.
Right, they're mostly IEP and 504.
Yeah, it's, it's mainly IEP and 504, so, you know, we have, we do have some help with the libraries and we've got a differentiated rate, I know for some of our computer lab, you know, if a building does have a lab, there was some differentiation there. But we could always build the schedule, the salary schedule for that and have a differentiation, I mean, that's possible, that's true, yeah.
So title money?
We have a few pairs that are titled, that assisted with interventions, so they may work with a group. Sorry, a group, like, Holland has two, or has a pair over there. So they work with intervention for math or reading. But we don't have any additional title money. And our, the title meetings are starting to slowly eat down, like, we're down to just paying for people with those funds.
So you're gonna market analysis for us?
That's easy for me to say, I'm looking at this guy across the way, he's our guy.
Jumpstart on it?
Where are we right now?
Below, below market. But I mean, we're looking at, you're talking about a lot of different things here, I need to go see what other people are doing so I can tell you what other people are doing, I mean, we could invent something if you want, but that's usually pretty expensive.
You mean, we lose at Home Depot or?
Oh, yeah, um, yeah.
So we need to go outside our industry to market for money. I think, well, I, I personally know of two pairs that actually left here to go work in the conservative industry.
Well, that changed a lot in the last year as far as.
Yeah, it's, yeah, and, and at points I believe it, just because they weren't getting paid enough for what they were getting. I think we need to come into market analysis in the industry and help other issues locally.
And then we are, do we have positions that we need to add, or do we have enough positions? I know it depends on IEP, but what about now IEP?
We do have open for positions, yes.
Okay. Let's start with that.
Okay. Good discussion.
Okay, and then, so hopefully get that going maybe by our time to another meeting this month, so, for miracle. Next is the same kind of conversation, this was also something that was discussed in the TAC meeting that I thought was a good discussion, that a permanent substitute in each building or a good amount in the buildings. And so that was with, somebody got sick all of a sudden, so, or, I guess for a knee, or with maybe some doctor's appointment for a few hours, I know some of their principals have been covering, which is great. And, and so they're like getting back in the classroom to see every once in a while that it's not sustainable. So there was a discussion, I'm just talking about it. And so, again, Eric and I have already kind of talked about it, but just during that time, I thought I'd bring it to you guys to see, get any feedback of what a permanent sub would do. Like to have one on campus or maybe just a few of them for last minute for more needs, again, to support teachers in different roles, utilities.
Yeah, and I think the theory on it was, when we discussed it, that, that, that's, if we did three for the district, let's just say, that they would get the first, you know, obviously, they would stay busy because they get the first op, the first roles that rolled in, you know, and then.
And not necessarily building specific, but like, if, if, you know, if two teachers in the high school.
I just, I think part of the discussion was like, if we had, I'm sorry, if we, we had one like at the middle school, Dogwood, you know, that could jump back and forth, you know, for different stuff, you know, but if there was nothing going on, then they could also use them for a, a sub in the classroom too. Yeah, I mean, for, for that day, I mean, there could be multiple different roles to use this, but.
Yeah, we did.
Theory was, we need some extra subs right now, and this, somebody, offering somebody full-time employment type of deal might really interest too, you know?
So, so that's what you're saying, we pay three, whatever the number is, three people a full year's salary to just be on call in our district.
They would show up every day, and we would plug them in.
So we're paying three people every day to show up and we'll put them wherever we need them.
You could even need one, I don't know what buildings are having higher needs either.
We're just gonna talk about just, I mean, ideally, if we could have them for specific buildings, because then it's a familiar face that the kids are used to and, you know, they know the staff and the students in that building, but I don't know if that's realistic.
Well, I know, we talked at the high school, middle school especially because of sports. You could all, we could always use them for sports, when coaches have to leave or this or that, you know, so.
Yeah, no doubt that we're gonna be able to keep them busy.
Yeah.
And they, they wouldn't be going through PIN Mac, they would be yard to leave, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I have no doubt, especially if it were one for every two buildings or, or whoever shakes out, but there would be something to do every day.
We also talked a little bit about retired teachers, because I know whenever we switched over to PIN Mac, there were a lot of retired teachers that didn't wanna go through that process. And so, maybe just, you know, kind of on an emergency basis, be able to hire, just within the district, hire subs, if you have a teaching certificate or if you are retired, that we would offer that to them, so they don't have to go through that whole process, just to get more people, to get rid of the barriers.
Essentially, essentially, if we had the appropriate amount on staff here full-time, just, you know, just depending on who needs a sub and what room at what time. If we did it right, that's essentially budget neutral, you're gonna have to pay a sub to come in, cover this closet.
I think it would be.
I think it was more of a last minute fee more than anything, like, somebody, it was a Sunday evening and their sample was, there's people in their room that were there to see if you remember, but it was definitely, oh, it was last minute and now they're trying to get their sub, like their plan and trying to make sure they have a sub, and I, I think that was more than, and then potentially COVID related.
It's the last minute.
Yeah.
As I've been watching at the high school, it's not the people that are putting in a sub two or three days. It's, oh my gosh, I'm sick, it's Sunday night, or my kid threw up, you know, and it's five AM, and those are the positions that you, you're not finding. And then, so at the high school and the middle school, they're asking teachers to sub by hour. Poor secretaries, they're like, okay, I still need this hour and that hour, it's the last minute. And there's, I can't think of a day this year there's not been an email about the last minute subs.
And you guys have been covering it, right?
Yes, and, and we get A, but then you lose your planning and if you really needed your.
Right, your planning period, yeah, it's just got anymore and more.
And it was also brought up that we don't give the option of, of an hour. You need to take an hour to take your kid to the ear doctor or whatever. You, you, we, it's a half a day or nothing, a half a day or full day or nothing, right? And it, you're looking, you're looking at me weird, Mr. Thompson here, is that not right?
You're, yes.
Sorry, you're talking.
Because this is coming out of the TAC meeting, so they're feeding us the wrong stuff.
No, that's, that is. They cannot just take an hour, I can tell you, if I have a teacher that needs to take off at two fifteen, we don't, I don't charge them for that. On those one offs like you're talking about, if they can find somebody else to help cover, because we don't want them, we don't want them out of the classroom. We don't want them to have to take a half a sick day to be gone forty-five minutes. So we try to work with them on things like that, and I think Melissa would attest to that.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, I think that this would also help out too, in those.
Yeah, even if.
Yeah.
Having somebody around.
Absolutely.
You know, if, if they're not already in a classroom, which it sounds like, the question whether we will even wind up being in a family or. It sounds like we may take one of that.
Yeah, I think we're all.
Well, you know, I'm thinking that maybe Pollyanna to say, these retired teachers, they retired, because they did one of me.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think, that's, that's probably not our full-time market. But I, I think what they were saying was basically that if we had a couple of people that were willing to be on call.
If we need anybody, well, sure.
As opposed to.
Six or three days a week or something, you know?
Then they're, then they're subject to their own retirement system rules about how many hours they can.
Right, yeah, so if you had six of them that did it three days a week or whatever, I mean, I'm sure that there could be a schedule or something like that.
I mean, there's all those things that, yeah, we have to think about doing for that.
The key tape weight, so we're trying to get more help for the teachers.
I mean, we could, we could look into this and see if that seems, like you said, is it budget neutral, is it? Are we gonna attract retired teachers because they don't wanna be here?
Yeah, and, you know, I'll say that.
There's a, she didn't wanna get up at six, eight, and I understand that.
There's a reason why they're retired, because they, they were done doing it every single day, and I, I totally appreciate that. But I don't think those are the kind of full-time target groups that we're looking at. We're, we're not looking at retired teachers to be that. But there are people that are eligible to substitute that, you know, don't really have the ability to wait for a call. Or like, well, you know, I, I can't substitute enough to justify doing it, but if it was a full-time position, you know, then they may leave some other line of work or, or whatever to. you know, then they may leave some other line of work or, or whatever to do that, and, you know, as opposed to, and then maybe a couple of local retirees that could be here, can you be here 15 minutes? Can we get somebody 15 minutes?
Yeah, I think they wanted to come out of retirement because it's all a need, that's just probably their bleeding heart to move. It could come help if we needed. So do we want to pick a number, kind of, maybe have also a recommendation for next week?
I have some stuff drawn up, I could send you tomorrow.
Okay.
Is it logistically difficult? Because who do they report to? You know, if they're bouncing to different buildings? I don't know how you figure that out.
Yeah, that's, that's really, I mean.
Start with a building, two buildings?
That's kind of really what we need to hash out is, I mean, do we start with three? You know, assign one to the high school and we split the other two to buildings, do we?
What do you need from us to post jobs?
I can just tell you what, I can just tell you what an employee cost versus a substitute. And then that'll give you a little bit of a starting place. Uh, can tell you pool-wise, if they're available to sub, we have them out. That, I mean, like if they are an able-bodied sub, they're working. So it's, it's just a crisis right now, and it's not just here. It's depressing, but, um, I have some stuff worked up already, I can just give it to you.
Like a job posting?
No, it's more, it's more like, um, just a cost analysis, so you can just take a look at it and see if you really, if that's the direction you want to go. If it, if it's worth your while to do that. Um, versus, um, what, uh, and then we could go ahead and develop job descriptions or whatever else. The other feedback that I received was that there would be, um, that, like if this is a certified teaching position, certified teachers would be, would, would not appreciate somebody, oh, with equal pay, that doesn't have to plan or collaborate or
Well, I don't, yeah, but I don't know that it has to be certified.
Well, that's good for me to know, because that helps me, that helps me develop an analysis. If you don't think it needs to be certified, but it's just. You mentioned.
Because if we have a full-time certified to be.
But when you say full-time sub, what, what is, I mean, we have, we need to know that category.
Qualifications of a certificate to substitute teach, we just keep them here.
So since the hours.
We keep them substituting enough to be full-time, to come in every day. There will always be a place that we need ASAP, as opposed to going through PIN Mac.
At our, at our new rate.
For substitutes? Well, I think we have to.
Okay.
Just say this, what you have to be the same rate.
Yeah, just say this, what you have, and then if you have to vote on something, you can do it next week, but I don't know.
That definitely is probably where that place is started.
You know, part of going to these conferences is not working it. So we came up at our regional breakfast the other day that one district, here's an idea for substitutes. When a person has taught five days, they don't have to be consecutive, but five days, the district gives them a hundred dollar bonus, thanks for being available for us for five days. And then they work six days, seven days, they work their 10th day, here's another bonus for working for five days.
I can see it.
I mean, that's, yeah, that's, that's money, but, you know.
You have to urge people.
And that, you know, so that was an idea that they had to keep subs, they, you know, want to come, and they use PIN Mac.
I don't know how you do that, I mean, I don't. It's the highest need area, I see how it goes, I'm happy about it, go wild with the whole history or anything. If we can, you know, see how it works, does it work? But okay, say this, what you have, and then we need to make a vote, we can do it next.
I mean, does it, if you don't mind, it, it, with administrators and stuff, I mean, does that sound like good, good ideas to you guys or no? I mean, do you see profit?
I think we would use them.
Yeah, we were having a sidebar conversation. There's not been a day this year that we haven't been scrounging, sending out emails, SOSs and
Yeah.
Cap ring and, yeah, they would be used.
Do you think every building really needs one or?
I was short seven subs today.
We need a non-stop. I, I guess my only question would be, like, in like, the access to all the subs that we currently have, is that, is that going to? I guess my question would be, is how's that going to change?
Right, like there's only so many subs.
Right now, we have so many subs, what, what's the incentive to provide a sub through, I guess, our district instead of through PIN Mac?
I mean, I've got all that worked up.
They just don't, they get full-time, people non-stop.
There's no question, it's.
But we would have to offer the benefits if they're full-time.
So that would be an incentive.
And there would be, yeah, there'd be an incentive and a cost too, so.
We do pay if you do PIN Mac too, I don't know how that offsets. If that could be as much.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So you, you'd be happy one way or the other if the logistics of it.
As long as we have subs in our building.
Right, as long as they have enough, logistically, and have that, like, looked, was appropriate. So all buildings, but maybe start.
And, and totally honestly, if, if we, if we decide to go with this, do a pilot program and nobody applies for it, we're not any different than we are now. But, you know, there's, there, there are people that I think that would appeal to.
Yeah, just not to burn it full-time.
You know, and, you know, you know you're getting a setting paycheck every time, you know, you don't, you may work for when, when you're on the rolls, you know, you may work a day here, a day here, with this building, with that building. Uh, you know, so I think there's people that that position would appeal to.
Just don't know how we'd ever miss if we had to get a sub for a sub.
And we would.
Quit figuring out.
Well, and, and, you know, what you said, it's, these guys, if, if, if they had one available, you know, they, they know they got one class group covered that day, but then we're still going to
Would the scope work ever?
We're still going to have to go to the west because it's, it's, we're going to have three, four, seven needs, so.
Would the scope work ever be a non-teacher? Like what they need to go up with? Would you, would we ask them potentially to have a cafeteria or?
I could.
Just to understand the scope.
Yeah, you could.
I'm throwing it out there.
To you.
Didn't they just change the? Well, I can say now, for, we, we use our subs for early release to stick around and help supervise kids for after-school sports, because, you know, we've got a middle school, kids aren't driving home, so a lot of times we're keeping them for you know, kids in the, in the commons area to be supervised by our subs before practices. So, I mean, we, we still use them now, I mean, we, we use a sub any way we can.
Right. Not limited to. All right, thank you, I think we're going to put it. So the board policies for review, this is first read. Mr. Thompson, do you want to talk about the ones that you're, were you working on them? I don't know what your role.
We, we, uh, sorry, Miley and Mr. Hunter, and that's been a while, hasn't it? Back in late August, I think, we looked at, I think it's JGR3, the high school discipline one that you have in front of you, and and Miley brought some, um, I guess, recommendations or recommended revisions to us, and so we, we talked through those. I think we got that pretty, pretty cleaned up pretty well, and, uh, and then I know, then at a, at a future DLP, Dr. Hatfield had shared some, I think, recommendations from the TAC committee, is that accurate?
That's correct.
And some of those revisions or recommended revisions were actually very similar in nature as far as what we had talked about with Miley and Mr. Hunter, and so JGR3 is the one that we've worked on, um, with, with Miley, Mr. Hunter, and I know we had somebody else. Were you, were you?
Me and Mr. Eno.
And Brett Eno, that's right, we had teacher representatives there too, so, and, uh, but yeah, a lot of those recommendations were the same. JGR3 is the only one that we worked to revise.
Oh, you're taking out pager?
Pardon?
That was from the TAC committee.
What, what did we do?
It says pager.
The pagers.
Uh, we don't have a lot of those.
Students can't have pagers anymore?
I think there'd be need if they did.
Take you back to the nineties, eighties, nineties.
All right, so that's the first read, what do we, what's that, what do we do at first read? Do we just present it?
Yeah, this is totally for, just for your information, so the board sees kind of all these at one time, and you see. Yeah, um, you know, if you got revisions, you got issues, you got, you know, something you'd like seeing in there, you got basically between now and next month, you know, to add that. At the second read, typically the board has, you know, either said, we're going to move ahead or we're not with, with any revisions. Um, but it, again, it's, this is more, hey, these are policies that are up, the reason why they're up for review to, um, just give you a chance to talk.
The TAC committee gave some feedback. Does anybody want to discuss anything?
I just got a few that I'll, I'll offer and just a few typos or something that I saw, but, yeah.
Yeah, I want to go back and re-read them after tonight. I thought, um, Mr. Brown's brought up a couple of good points on a couple of them that I wrote down, but I I'll send an email if I, if I'm ready.
I mean, there's one, for example, there's one under technology misconduct in, uh, JGR3. Plus, when the use of electronic communication devices will be allowed before school, during lunch, those name breaks for LCTC and Horizons only. What about the other buildings can be not included district-wide? I think that's probably the greatest.
That was on our tax feedback as well.
Oh, you got that, you saw the two, okay.
Yep.
And that JGR3, just so you know, that's, that's just a high school, uh, JGR2 would be middle school and JGR1 is elementary.
Just little things, yeah.
So what's the one on political campaigns? Where is that coming? Is that for like initiatives? Is that coming? Or is this just something that was said that?
Is this BBB?
Yeah.
School board elections?
Yeah, you can.
So like the ballot is?
Yeah, you can see that, uh, basically there was a bill that passed and the policy needed to be clarified, that you can't use public funds to support or oppose ballot measures. So there was a change in some state statute and this policy needed to be adjusted to.
Have we ever done that?
Um, well, I certainly hope not.
Okay. No, I mean, not, I'm trying, sorry, it wasn't like, gotcha, it was like, is that normal? Because I know we had some initiatives on ballots that were you know, different things that the school was interested, or what about even the bond issue or something? Don't, do, do we not pay at all?
Uh, like, like a bond issue, I mean, there's a totally separate committee.
That's a different thing.
That, you know, I, I I can't, I couldn't advocate one way or the other. Now, you know, like if we had a ballot issue, I think everybody knows, right? Uh, but I can't use school funds to go like on the radio or do something like that, that has to be through a separate.
Personally, see.
If, 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 if the radio, if the radio station invited you to just talk about it.
I can educate, schools can educate, we can't advocate.
And you can't use our district money to buy a billboard that says, hey, vote yes on.
Yeah, we can say, go please vote.
Yes, yes, that's, again, that's educating.
We do have to approve, is it kind of the same thing? For the announcement for the new dates?
That was in consent.
Okay, thank you. Interesting, like it was.
Are you thinking about for board candidates? Board, for board candidates, that was your thing. I answered before you finished, I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you, I just wanted to get. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we'll get one. So you have the board rapport?
And the only thing that I had, uh, of course, to hold the November special, I think, what, the board settled on the 23rd, we're going to roll. What, what time would you like that? Would you like it at 7:00, 7:30, what would you think?
I don't know, Tuesday morning? I mean, if any other morning works better for people, Tuesday's the only morning that doesn't, but I'll make it work.
Monday work?
Sure. But Monday's not good, I mean, yeah.
Uh, I.
This, this.
Good with whatever, guys, Tuesdays are really hard, I have, it's my Columbia day. Tuesdays.
I think I said, I'd be okay with.
Do we have to set it up right now?
Uh, no, you don't have to, I mean, we just need 24 hours notice, right?
Yeah.
So I'm starting to get, looking for someone to be in charge of.
Like I said, if you, if we got to do Tuesday off, I could work, oh, we do, but we had a better day.
I don't like that 7:00, sorry.
Hey, 9:00, 10:00, that's all good too. It's not PM.
You're probably going to need a channel that looks.
What else?
Oh yeah, that's, that's running right in on Thanksgiving too. So it's family in town and people out of town.
Maybe that Monday might be best if everybody could.
Yeah, I can figure it.
Send the, if zoom in.
Yeah, and I have to.
Just do it on Thanksgiving. Everyone bring a dish. Bring, bring your family and bring a dish.
Move, move to the church executive session.
Eric, and it's not going to hear, but has a decision made on Thanksgiving week, the days that we someone on the board suggested that, you know, we give our staff off.
We're trying.
So I know we had an explanation of what that would require, but then that's, I think, all we got is an explanation of, well, if we did that, then we, this would occur, or we would have to have snow days or this would occur, so I, I mean, we're not going to be together again, well, until that period week. So what, 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 what's the pleasure of the board about those Thanksgiving?
My opinion is, if we are going to adjust the calendar to give students and staff extra time, I think it's more beneficial if Christmas came. Because that's semester switch, um, you know, Christmas break is maybe long enough to kind of go somewhere, maybe not, but, you know, anyways, if we're going to do it, I just think that people would get more benefit out of it. As opposed to a couple of extra days a month before the end of the semester and then come back and then finish up the semester, I think it would be more beneficial. Just from give, you know, give people a break, reward for a great semester and Christmas, but.
I mean, we, and because they have to adjust exam schedules for end of semester exams, it's a little late to be making them adjust that, adjust that schedule.
So to my understanding.
If, if we give them off days, they've also some days, but say it's before Christmas, then they get rolled, and then do all their lesson plans, you know, backwards, because now exams are this day instead of that day.
Well, to give any days, do we have to add days to the end of the schedule? Is that where we're at, is that?
We have, we have to come up with days that we could use as a backup.
If you go below, and I'm, I'm a little, I'm now just barely, it, it could be possible is to go, okay, well, we're going to take these two days off, we're going to tack two other days on. Somewhere. And then that keeps you over, that keeps you over the.
Well, we're already tied with all the others, so.
Procedural issue, can we get this done, because it's Thanksgiving's probably going to be too late.
Without adding, adding days, one taking away the president's day or?
Yeah, and I, you know, I think everybody would, you know, think that's great having those, you know, that, that we get Thanksgiving. I, I just know when we went through the calendar with the TAC committee, there was a lot of, you know, we lengthened spring break a little bit because days are protected. You know, there were, there were a lot of benefits, and, and I know some districts are, you know, modified their calendars, and that's a really cool thing to do for your staff because you want to take care of them, right, and you care for them. But I, I think we've got some other things in the calendar that are good too.
Do you do a decent spring break? Not huge, but decent.
Yeah, it's better than, I think, what we've had for a while, and the, and the days are protected as well. You know, we got into it last year where we were getting down close to that state minimum. where we were getting down close to that state minimum, uh, number of hours and we were going to have TAC days on at the end of the year, you know, and that doesn't go over so well too because you got families that were counting on that last day of school and then they got a trip planned to so-and-so, you know.
December break is horrible. But. I don't believe. We just see everybody else doing it, so we're like, we, everyone else sees everybody else's days.
Yeah, and you're honestly five days, I think it's giving us. It's not horrible, because if they're given Tuesday or Thursday off, it's a, you have to go 8:00 AM Friday.
Well, I'm sorry for bringing up, but I just felt like we talked about it, we had emails and we had, and so now we're going to say, no, we're going to school, not give Tuesday Thanksgiving week as the calendar says, so that's kind of.
I'd, I'd love to give it to them.
Well, I know we're lucky, but I'm just saying, what is our position, we're going to stick with the calendar.
I hope we're not going to do it because we're.
Not what I, I.
I'm just, I'm moving forward since we know it's always on a Thursday, the actual holiday, which is good.
Consider that's next year's calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seven revisions in the calendar this year, I think, or seven, revision after revision and stuff. But, yeah, I mean, honestly, at this point, I'd love to give it to them, I just don't know what reason.
Okay, then the other thing is, I just wanted to let you, so the Education Foundation currently has the classroom impact grant cycle open, so teachers could be applying for a classroom impact grant now, and they're due, I think, that Monday after Thanksgiving, so I just wanted to let you know that. And I gave them a training, so.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think that email will.
Yeah, we sent out an email to staff.
Because we had a few missed in that line.
Second.
It was there.
Hi.
Oh, no.
Hi, hi.
Hi, hi.
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 Linda, you want me to shut the session?
No, because we need that soon.